Good morning, Madam Mayor. We are ready to begin whenever you are.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for being here this morning. I have a very special guest. We have another mayor for the day, Jimmy Nunley, and there's his mother, Kim. Hi, Kim. And we're really excited because it's just such a great way to get our youth involved in local government. Because we need future leaders, right, and future mayors? All right, well, we're excited to get started. So we're going to start out with the Pledge Allegiance, and I'm going to have you lead us in the pledge, Mayor, for the day.
Thank you.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Great job. Okay. Before we start, why don't you hit the gavel for us so we officially begin? It's always fun to do. Okay. Madam Clerk, I'm going to send it right back to you for roll call.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Breckus. Doerr.
Doerr.
Here, thank you. Delgado. Weber.
Here.
Jarden.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Mayor Jimmy Nunley.
Here.
Mayor Shivi.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
All right. Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to send it right back to you for a public comment.
Great. I think we have an announcement from our city attorney first this morning, which I'm going to go ahead and let him take, and then we'll move into public comment.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Hall.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, and Mayor Nunley, council members, Mr. Hodge. I wanted to introduce the newest member of the city attorney's office and the city team. This is Holly Parker. Holly Parker is an attorney. She joined our office a couple of weeks ago when Bill McKean retired. She brings a wealth of experience in the civil arena, and she's going to be a great addition to the office. She's already proven that she can carry the weight and perform well for our organization. So please join me in welcoming Holly Parker to the Reno City Attorney's Office and our team.
Well, fantastic. Welcome to the city. We're excited to have you. Carl, one thing he does very, very well is he assembles the best team ever, ever. So if I could steal all of you guys, I would on our side, but we're lucky to have you, and we'll see you all around City Hall, and please say hello. Go ahead, Councilman Reese.
Madam Mayor, I've been privileged as a member of the bar to know Ms. Parker for, I think, all of her legal career and most of mine. It's been about 20 years now, but what a joy, what an incredibly fabulous member of our bar, thoughtful, well-respected, hyper-intelligent, just a great human being. And I could not be more proud to have you on our team now. I wouldn't want to be on the other side of you, and so just an incredible addition to Mr. Hall's team. So welcome, Ms. Parker.
Thank you, Councilmember Reese.
And while I have the microphone on the floor, I'd like to publicly thank William McKean for his great contributions to our office. He's an excellent attorney, an excellent human being, who's a great addition to our office. He always brought excellent advice, great writing skills, oral skills. He was just a joy to have around the office, and he will be missed. But we want to wish him well in his retirement and hope he's having a good time with his wife and his motor home and enjoying life. So, thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. We miss you.
Thanks, Bill. All right. Thank you so much, Carl. Really appreciate it, and welcome, Holly. Okay, sending it right back to you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our first public commenter today is, oh, let's read our disclaimer first. Our, we're moving into general public comment. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Please note that council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. Our first public commenter today is Jerry Mifsud, followed by Terry Brooks, followed by Allison Hinkle.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I'm so sorry, and maybe you can help me decide where you want. We have a very special proclamation.
Okay.
How would you like us, do you want to do it after public comment, or you want to do it before?
I've only got four commenters today, so let's just wrap it up with your proclamation.
Okay, sounds good. Good morning, Jerry. Come on, come on up.
Good morning, Madam Mayor. On May 18th, I was thrown out of the City Hall meeting because some errant city councilman took it upon himself to impose a non-existing dress code. I'm still wearing that same shirt. And why aren't you throwing me out? To add insult to injury, I was banned from City Hall for six months. And somebody alerted the security guard to go to the city clerk's office and tell them to tell me, imagine the chain of command has kicked the can down, to tell me I was banned from City Hall for six months. That is so inappropriate to ask an underling, a hard worker in the city clerk's office to tell me I was banned. But I'm here today, two months later, and my ban? No. You know why? It was all bullying. But Oscar, you said to me, there's more to it. And this was not about my shirt. This was about personal revenge enacted by Councilman Reese. Three years ago, I offended a colleague, a friend, and associate of his. And he took it upon himself, and I came before the city council, and I apologized for that while even you were here. But he took it upon himself to hold that anger and hatred inside, and he played it out on May 18th. Okay, there's the clock. What you folks have done here is now, you have not returned my phone calls. The city attorney asked you, Mayor, for a meeting with me so we could avoid this public airing of laundry. We could have done this all in private, but since you refused to answer, to invite me into your office, Mr. Thornley did your backpedaling. You're afraid of, and you're covering up something. You're covering up, but by saying nothing, you're proving of his misbehavior, and that makes you an accessory. And we expect you, as leadership mayor, to step up and at least apologize on behalf of the city council for the way I was treated. There was nothing wrong with my apparel, and it's not about my apparel. The ACLU says, and they're very close to this situation, that it would be inappropriate to impose anything like that. But you let this errant city councilman mouth off and insult me and humiliate me, publicly humiliate me. And I've been in the hospital twice since then, and that's a libel issue, and it's an issue of personal attack. It has nothing, and we just may see you in court. Get ready, Carl.
Terry Brooks.
Thank you very much. Any comment from the city council?
Thank you, Mr. Mifsud. Terry Brooks, followed by Allison Hinkle, followed by Tracy Wilson.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today I'd like to address following the politics when it comes to homelessness. Following the politics to homelessness is quite an episode. Whenever I follow politics, I find a fork in the road. Two sides of politics rarely agree with one another. One side says one thing, the other side says another. Some politicians say the rich should pay more taxes than the poor. Some politicians say the rich should not have to pay anymore. Some politicians say the poor need help to get employed. Other politicians say the poor don't want to be employed. Some politicians say the poor should receive an affordable, good education. Others say that the poor don't want an education. Some politicians say that the poor need affordable housing. Others say the poor don't deserve a cheaper access to housing. Some politicians say the poor need access to food. Others say that the poor don't deserve free food. Some politicians say the poor need access to health care. Some say the government should pay for the poor people's health care. Some politicians say the poor need facilities for mental health. Some say the government should pay for the poor people's mental health. Some politicians say the poor need help to get out of poverty, while others say it's their own fault that they're in poverty. So I've been doing some research on each of these matters. Some might say it doesn't matter, while others say it matters. I'd like to add that homeless people are less likely to vote. So to some politicians, that means they're less likely to rock the boat. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I will try not to rock the boat in the things that I will say. Oh, by the way, this is chapter 35, so I'm only going to bother you 11 more times on this subject. Then I got another one I'm working.
Right, okay, all right. Fantastic. Thank you so much, Terry.
Thank you.
Good job. I look forward to the very final chapter.
Allison Hinkle, followed by Tracy Wilson.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Allison Hinkle, and I'm with the American Wild Horse Campaign. I am the program coordinator for the Virginia Range Fertility Control Program. We have a cooperative agreement with the Nevada Department of Agriculture to treat the Virginia Range free-roaming horses with birth control to address the wild horse population using PZP, which is an immunocontroceptive vaccine. We recently finished our year three report, and I wanted to share some good news with all of you. The number of recorded births range-wide has decreased again this year with a 61.4 decrease from January through June in 2022 versus the same time period in 2020. This encompasses the peak foaling period on the range, and over 1,700 mares have been treated across the range. Specifically in the area where the range borders from the city of Reno, from Hidden Valley to Dumont Ranch, we have had only four foals born this year as of today, and two of which have survived, making our mortality rate range-wide to sit at just over 50% for foals surviving to one year of age, mostly due to predation. Natural horse deaths in this area have outnumbered births, meaning this specific area population is now decreasing. Our program is conducted with certified and trained volunteers and is funded through donations and private grants. This means that no public tax money is used to conduct the program, and we are grateful to the major corporations and private landowners that help make our program successful by allowing and supporting our program on their land. We want to express our appreciation to the city of Reno for our current steps being taken for public safety and the public meetings that have been held so far to address the issues of the urban and rangeland interface. We also want to let you know that we are doing our part in addressing the population numbers in these critical interface areas, and you have all been given a copy of our year three annual report for your reference as well. Yeah, thank you for having me here today.
Thank you.
Our final commenter today is Tracy Wilson.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Tracy Wilson with the American Wild Horse Campaign and Wild Horse Connection. As you know, I'm here to talk about the Virginia Range horses, the urban rangeland interface, and the safety of the public and the horses. I'd like to thank the city of Reno for the steps being taken so far for public safety in regards to this interface. It was stated by the mayor at a previous council meeting a while back that she didn't want to have any more projects in this interface brought for approval until a larger horse plan was put in place. Thankfully, some strides are being made, but we're still not there yet. Councilwoman Doerr has pledged money for wildlife recreation corridor planning to allow movement of wildlife, horses, and people, and hopefully access to natural water for both wildlife and horses. Councilwoman Doerr and Assistant City Manager Jackie Bryant have spearheaded meetings to address public safety issues and a proposed fencing project related to unfenced sections of the interface allowing horses onto busy city of Reno roadways, but we still have a ways to go. There have also been held, sorry, they have also held two public information sessions to answer questions from and educate the public. The city of Reno Public Works has designed signage, installed warning signs for horses on the roadway, and they've been responsive to our input. I've worked with Associate Planner Brooke Oswald on the project you'll hear today to determine the best kind of gates to meet city code with the least amount of maintenance and replacement now that we better understand the challenges. The city has PSAs in the works as we move into the season of horses on the roadways. Only the city of Reno has come to the table. Sunny Hills is refusing to install a gate for public safety that they paid to have made. Daybreak has yet to meet their conditions a year and a half after starting the fencing of their project. The Canyons refuse to do alternative water in mitigating a project in a major path for the canyons to get wa, for the horses to get to water. I will give Canyon's Edge credit for trying to do mitigation beyond what is required with fencing. But the rest need to come to the table before more development is planned and approved for this interface. Every one-off development that goes through without thoughtful collaborative mitigation range-wide creates a ripple effect and displaces issues and the horses onto someone else, and sometimes that's the unknowing public behind the wheel of a vehicle. The only true answer is for the major players to come to the table and create a sustainable plan. Until then, every one-off development approved potentially causes harm beyond its mitigation. Thirteen horses were hit and killed on the streets of South Reno last year. Four more walked away. Fortunately, the drivers all walked away. The next one may not be so fortunate. Thousands of Reno residents are counting on you to make the best decisions that are going to keep them safe, and Reno and Nevada's heritage horses safe. We should be waiting to approve further projects in this area until the things I've mentioned are secured. It doesn't need to be so hard to do the right thing, and when we do the right thing, everyone wins, and Reno sets a gold standard on thoughtful interface development. Thank you to the city of Reno for everything that you're doing.
All right, thank you, Tracy.
All right. Madam Mayor, with that, we have no additional public comment. However, I would like to note for the record, we received six comments, which were general in nature or not directly associated with an agenda item today prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, July 26th. There were three comments in favor of items, one in opposition, and two letters of concern. We have no voicemails.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to send it over to Mayor Nunley, and you can wrap up this portion.
This concludes our public comment portion of the meeting. Now Vice Mayor Ne will deliver a very special proclamation.
Okay, good. Good job. We've had this on our radar for a very long time. We have, we have. So this is an incredibly special, sad, but celebratory day that we have here in the city of Reno. We have someone that's just so immensely impactful to all of us that come into City Hall every day, and the public and every employee comes by Donald here, who has for the last six years. And he is just such a, first off, you do an amazing job, but you are also just this smile-for-miles person that really sets the tone for everybody that comes into City Hall, not to mention the bucket of candy that he has at his disposal that I think keeps us running on our long council days. So Donald, it is my pleasure to read this proclamation for you today. And I will try not to cry because you're just an amazing human being, so.
Thank you.
You bet. Let me put my glasses on here. Whereas Donald Walters served the Reno Police Department Senior Auxiliary Volunteer Effort, or SAVE, program, assisting the department with various non-emergency services while also providing an increased level of crime prevention through patrol and observation. And whereas, on July 27th, 2022, Donald is retiring, I don't think you're allowed to, from his duties with SAVE after serving with enthusiasm, diligence, attentiveness for six years. And whereas, through his kindness shown by his unfailing positive attitude and his infectious smile, Donald has brought joy and camaraderie to every shift he has volunteered for. And whereas Donald and his beloved snack bowl will be greatly missed by city of Reno staff and visitors, especially on long council days. And whereas Donald and the SAVE program have had a tangible effect on the demeanor, rapport, and safety of the Reno community. And whereas the city of Reno recognizes and appreciates the time and energy that Mr. Walters has contributed to the benefit of this community. Now for their, I, Neoma Jarden, on behalf of Hillary L. Shivi, the mayor of the city of Reno, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, July 27th, 2022, as Donald Walters' Day.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. I just want to let you know I'm going to miss City Hall. I'm going to miss my car patrols. I'll miss my foot patrols, but definitely I'll miss City Hall the most. And I do have my snacks out there today, so if anybody wants any. But thank you all so much, and again, I wish I didn't have to retire, but doctor's orders and everything. Got some troubles going on, so, but I'll always remember this to the day I die, all right?
You are, you are truly a bright light because you know, sometimes when we walk out there, it can be pretty stressful, and you are the first person that we get to interact with. And how many times that you have just been such a positive, gosh, just your energy, everything about you, and you're always smiling, and, I mean, you really make that transition sometimes of this very heavy situation that we can sometimes feel in here when we walk out there, and you have nothing but a smile and kindness. And I just got to say, it's been, it's been truly an honor and a pleasure to work with you, and our door is always open. So if you decide tomorrow you don't want to retire, it's all good. You can come right back.
All right, sounds good.
So the door is always open, anytime you want to come. But we just want to thank you for all of your dedicated service to the city. You love the city, and matter of fact, I got to tell you, this is kind of special. We had the Conference of Mayors, and you were one of our top volunteers. And I had so many mayors come up to me and said, God, if I could bring that guy to my City Hall, I would. They said, you can't have him. You know how competitive I am, right?
Yes, I know.
But it was consensus all across the board that you were absolutely the shining star throughout the conference. You need to know that. So thank you for everything you do, and I know everyone on this body appreciates all you've done for our city. And I know Manager Thornley, unfortunately, couldn't be here today, but he wanted me to express how grateful he is for your service. And he really wanted to be here. He was so excited. I mean, I think he really wanted to actually deliver the proclamation, but Vice Mayor, she just is so grateful for all you do, and you know she worked so closely with SAVE. I'd like to open up to the body if you have any kind words, because all of us consider you a very dear friend.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Donald, thank you so much for being such a gracious ambassador for the city. It's not just City Hall. I know that as you go about your day and just, just the way you carry yourself has been a privilege to have you represent the city. And some of those days are hard, of course, for us, but I've just never seen anyone smile and greet people so graciously and keep us all safe. So I thank you for that, and I wish you well on your journey. And of course, as the mayor said, we're always happy to see you come back and visit with us, and hopefully we'll get the opportunity to do that with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You know, you were just a great fit for the seat down there with your cherry disposition and very welcoming to all, and I wish you really the best in your retirement. Thank you. It's been a privilege to know you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Donald, thank you. We've always been able to talk and chat on the side, but I've always appreciated you and your character and your just, your demeanor. And I think I can speak on many first-time citizens that walk into our City Hall that that in itself is amazing in terms of how you're able to welcome individuals with just a smile. And that's, I believe, the strongest form of security, is when people are able to come in here and they're able to shed off some of those nervous, that nervousness and that sense of not belonging. So now they feel like they belong, and this is the people's house. And so I appreciate you and your demeanor and your welcoming smile. So thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. I have to say, from the day I started almost eight years ago, you have been that guy. And it's a smile. You almost, you anticipate, may I get this door for you? Could I let you in here? Could I carry your books for you? I mean, if there's something that you could do to help, you do it. Hey, have a brochure. Here's a cookie. How about some candy? I mean, you've got it all covered, all the basic needs. So Donald, you know, from the basics to beyond that, you are that guy. And I have a feeling in retirement, you're going to continue being that guy. So thank you for making my time here much more pleasurable.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Weber.
Thank you so much. Donald, you are the best. You're the knight in shining armor. We walk in, and there you are to greet everyone. And I just, everyone else has said it, but you're the best. We are praying for you and hope that everything works out, and come on back. We want you, we want you to, you know, check in with us and let us know how things are going. So just the best and best wishes to you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
So it is your day, so you know what that means. You can speed anywhere you want without getting in trouble. And if you get arrested, we will come and bail you out. And then we have this special recognition. This is one of our, what do we call this, like a street plate? Now, we've been using them all over the city to sort of spread messages of kindness and positivity. And we all signed one especially just for you, so we want to make sure you have it. I think we have other goodies too from some of our staff, and they're sitting right here. Jenica and Ashley, they absolutely, they truly are the ones that, I can't tell you how much they absolutely love and adore you. So I'm on behalf of these two as well, so, anyway, okay, here you go. It's, look, it's signed by all of us at City Hall.
Oh, fantastic.
All of us. So you won't forget us.
All right.
All right, let's get a picture really quick.
Okay, yes.
So I think we'll go up under the.
Under the thing.
No, you can't, Lee. This is all a ploy to keep you here. Yeah, he's only a doctor. He doesn't know. Okay, yes, come on. Come on. Come on. Come on, get in here, Jenica, Ashley. Okay, everyone come in. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's just tight quarters.
All right, Madam Clerk, are we ready?
We are. We're moving on to item A4, approval of the agenda.
Okay, perfect. At this time, I am going to ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask, and I don't know if we need to reopen that item, but the C items, I may need to between now and one need to take a moment out. Could we possibly move the C items to 1:00?
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So let the record reflect that we will take the C items at 1:00. Okay. Madam Clerk, at this time, I'm going to ask for approval of the minutes. May I get a motion? I have a motion?
We got, oh, we don't have minutes on this agenda.
Oh, okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, at this time, I'm going to ask, Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment on consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have one public commenter in the audience, Barb Fenny.
Okay.
I'm Barb Fenny. I represent the biggest little beast city, USA. And I got my buzz on this morning with an early morning phone call saying, gee, Barb, a bear knocked over a whole bunch of hives this morning, and I can't be at City Hall. Can you come in and do the deed? So here I am.
Well, that was nice of you.
Well, after all, I did found the organization, and it's been. Well, after all, I did found the organization, and it's been years in the making, but we got through it, so I brought a little bitty baby honeybee, for those of you who think that all bees are, all flying things are bees, this is really a honeybee, so a little education. We've been working on our mission statement. We're a consortium of nonprofits and individuals concerned with pollinator health in partnership with the city of Reno, Nevada, advocating in the interest of all pollinators whose populations are shrinking worldwide. We support the education and awareness of our Reno community to assist in maintaining and building pollinator habitat, as well as limiting and properly using pesticides. We encourage continued research, conservation, and sustainable practices in our city, and the city has really set the bar for a lot of communities with our pesticide-free parks, and I hope that continues. I'll give you a few little statistics here, there were 1,072,700 people engaged in pollinator conservation as a result of the Bee City USA and Bee City Campus USA. Habitat projects completed over 2,400 acres, 25,444, 2,544, my math teacher would be bald. A wide range of approaches and using integrated pest management to reduce pesticide. So I'm actually here to thank Mr. Reese for proposing the payment of a $500 annual fee for Bee City USA. We have started, we started the Bee City before it was even approved.
Thanks, Ms. Fenny.
Is that it? That's, okay, I guess I got it in there.
Alright, thank you so much. Okay, Madam Clerk, do you have any other public comment at this time?
Madam Mayor, we have no additional public comment.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Before we get going, could we, for a procedural item, in the event that I have to step out, and if you happen to be out, I would make a motion to nominate Devin Reese as the presiding officer if both of us are out.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, at this time, Madam Clerk, we are gonna go into consent items, I'm gonna start with Councilwoman Breckus, items to pull off the consent agenda.
B20, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Reese. Councilman Delgado. Vice Mayor Jordan. Councilwoman Doer.
I have just, I had one thing circled, hold on one second, actually, there were two things circled, it was item B8, and, hold on.
Can you repeat that?
Sorry, item B8.
B8, okay.
And B12.
And B12.
Yep.
Alright, Councilwoman Webber.
One item, so I won't do it. Can I just say that on item B6, Longboards Pizza?
Okay.
Getting their license, I am really excited about Longboards Pizza anyway, because we are fortunate to have one in the North Valleys in Ward 4, but very excited for it to be down in your ward, down in your ward, but over in your ward, and so just want to say, they're the best, and it's a great place for everyone, so it's been really good, and one of the best pizzas I think we have, so.
I'm looking forward to them coming, I can't wait.
Well, then you both could do the ribbon cutting.
Get to make your own.
I love it. Okay, that's great, thank you so much, Councilwoman Webber. Alright, so I have a motion from Councilman Reese, a second from Councilman Delgado, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Alright, we will now go into item B8, and that goes to Councilwoman Doer.
Yeah, and I'm glad that Ms. Fenny's still here, I just wanted to highlight this project, which is black rabid mead, we just heard about the bees, but I had mead for the first time pretty recently with the departure of my beekeeper, and he makes mead all the time, and I was lucky enough to get a bottle, and I just wanted to compliment them for their innovativeness, I don't know that they're here today, is that correct?
They're not here today.
Right, so I just wanted to go on the record, mead is made from honey, it's an amazing, interesting product, some of the mead that our beekeeper shared, I loved, and some I wasn't as fond of, so there's a huge variety in it, but I just wanted to highlight them, they're not in my ward, but I think they're doing some really interesting business process, so thank you, so I would make a motion to approve item B8.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Item B12, Councilwoman Doer.
Yeah, thank you. Item B12, I really just want to highlight for our public the great work that our Public Works Department is doing, and if you could just tell us just a tiny bit about this project, I know it's out at Edison Way University, but I know we continue to expend funds on important sewer replacements, and when it's almost $4 million, I think that our public wants to know, you know, we'll be happy to learn.
Yeah, thank you for the comment, good morning, City Council, my name is Eric Miller, Associate Civil Engineer, Utility Services, for the record. The item before you is the award for the Edison Way University Lift Station Replacement for Far Construction Corporation, doing business as Resource Development Company. So about the project, it's a replacement of two sanitary sewer lift stations, the first one is Edison Way, which is located between Jewel Street and Energy Way in Ward 3, the lift station was built in 1968, since that time, and has been relatively untouched, and no major improvement since. In 2020, we did do an assessment of all of our lift stations, and they got a priority ranking of one being the worst, and five being the best, Edison Way received a priority score ranking of one, and this is the last of the lift stations of the priority one ranking. The project will consist of a full rebuild and demolition of the project. The next lift station...
There you go.
Yeah, none of it's...
Try the keyboard?
Madam Clerk, it's not advancing for us?
Mouse or the keypad.
There we go, thank you.
The other lift station associated with this project is the University Lift Station, it is located at the terminus of Moran Way in Ward 4, this lift station was built in 1969, and similar to Edison Way, it has received no major improvement since and remained untouched. The 2020 lift station assessment gave this lift station a priority score of two, we chose this lift station over all the other lift stations, as this area will be receiving a street unit improvement next year, and so trying to get in ahead of that street unit. The project will also consist of a full demolition and rebuild, the lift stations were on the 2023 fiscal year budget cycle, and they are coming in under budget. So a little background on the sewer system, and why and when a lift station is needed, all sewer connections are connected to a gravity system, when that gravity system becomes too deep to maintain, or it reaches a low point in the system, a lift station is required. The lift station will then lift the sewage to a higher location using pump and piping to then allow it to go gravity again. So why is the project recommended? It's recommended to replace old and failing infrastructure, it will provide a safer product and work environment for maintenance staff, and it will bring it up to current industry standards. And that concludes my presentation, are there any questions?
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Doer, any further questions?
No, I just, I really appreciate the work you're doing, I know it's hard, it's kind of like that unsung hero type of work, where it's not new, it's a replacement of maintenance, which isn't, you know, doesn't get the attention that a bright new shiny object does, but we do appreciate your work, and I'm happy to make a motion to approve this item.
Thank you.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Item B20, Councilwoman Breckus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the deputy city attorney is bringing forward, let's see, what is this? Oh, I guess the HR director, your name is not on this, it's the city attorneys, and I do have a question for them, this is the second amended and restated employment agreement with our city manager, and just as follow-up to his evaluation, that was on, which day? June 8th, June 8th, so you've worked on the contract with him.
Good morning, Council and Councilmember Breckus, Norma Santoio, you're HR Director, I just have a quick overview of this item, and then I'll hand it over to our legal team.
Okay, I do have questions for him, and I want to make sure that I'm gonna get time allocated, so if we can stop the clock right now while staff makes the presentation, then I'll have time to make sure my questions are answered, thank you.
That will be very quick, just as a quick overview, on June 8th, council did provide the city manager his annual performance evaluation, and did direct staff to return with an amended employment agreement that included a longevity piece, that particular provision is within this item, and it asks for council's consideration and approval of a six-month purchase of service credit with Nevada PERS retirement system for every one year of service from city manager Thornley, starting July 1 of 2021, moving forward. The fiscal impact for this ask is no more than $50,000 for fiscal year 2023, so I'm happy to answer any questions or defer to our legal team as necessary.
Yeah, and just to recap, I did not support his continued employment in this agreement, so I just want to remind people of that, and have them refer to that June 8th meeting if they're interested, and they can follow up with me, I was very elaborate and transparent as the law requires us to be, and do our chief executive evaluations in public, and we always have to follow the law, you know, the legislature sets for cities, even when we're, it's uncomfortable and we're not crazy about it, in California, these kind of evaluations go in closed door, I understand, but I want to ask you a question about this PERS purchase, is that a benefit that any other employees have as a course of doing business? Is it in any of the bargaining groups, or in any of our resolutions about the non-represented?
It is not in any of the other employee groups as a benefit in the form of a purchase of service, however, a lot of our labor groups do have a longevity component within their collective bargaining agreement.
Yeah, that's different, though, and let me ask you as follow-up too, is there a maximum amount of PERS purchase that can be obtained by any individual, whether their employer's buying it, their grandmother's buying, or they're buying it?
There are, NRS 286 specifically outlines those requirements, and it is dependent on when the member entered the Nevada retirement system, for the city manager, he is eligible to purchase up to five years of service, the purchase may be individual purchase or purchase by the employer, but it cannot exceed five years of service.
Is that contemplated in the agreement? Has he already bought some purchase? I mean, this is a, this contract has a rollover, so, you know, we don't want to violate and go beyond the five years, correct? How do we prevent that?
Well, the agreement does specifically state per NRS 286 regulation, so it's, we've woven into the agreement that we would make sure to be in compliance with the statute.
Okay, okay, and then the staff report that was drafted by the attorney's office brought in this AB 385, and I'd forgotten that, I'm sure our staff, when they followed the Nevada 21, Nevada Legislative Legislature, updated us, but it says that essentially, you cannot, let me see, I looked it up, you cannot give any employee a benefit that others don't have unless you have a policy specific to that, I didn't see the policy in the, in the staff report, and I don't recall the council adopting the policy, and NRS 281 says, "A public body shall not enter into an employment contract that entitles an officer or employee of the public body to receive any fringe benefit unless the public body has adopted a policy authorizing all persons employed by the public body in a similar position to receive the benefit." So where's that policy? Do we have that?
That is why we're here today, so I will defer to our legal team on that.
We are adopting the policy today?
For the record, John Shipman, City Attorney's Office, thanks for the question, Councilmember Breckus, I think, I mean, you pointed out the key language in that statute, the words to really focus on is a similar position to receive benefits, and as city manager, Mr. Thornley really is in a class of one, he is not, I mean, his position is markedly different than basically any other management-level employee, he has the ability to hire and fire, he reports directly to the council, the council can discharge him, amend his contract, he's one of only two, he's only one employee that has a contract, so when we looked at it in that light, and we looked at it in light of the 286, 305 provision, it was pretty clear that this doesn't apply to Mr. Thornley in his position, again, because he is in a class of one, as opposed to like a management-level employee, a mid-management-level employee, a confidential employee, those are other classifications that I'm sure you're familiar with, so.
Thank you very much, we'll come back around again, any other council members have any questions or comments? Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, I think, of course, my thoughts on the subject from our last meeting are well-known, but in the event that no one here today or in public is watching and is gonna go back and look at that, I want folks to know that I strongly support this effort, I think the city of Reno experienced a significant amount of turnover in the city manager's office between sort of temporary fill-in folks and folks who stood in the gap while we were looking for city managers, I think the number was somewhere around five or six chief executives in a very short period of time, and part of the issue is, is that we want to ensure that Mr. Thornley stays with us for the long haul, he's undertaken and is undertaking a number of different policy directions and changes that are absolutely working, the organization is in good hands, this particular one, this benefit that's identified here as the real substantive change to the agenda, or to the contract, really is a recognition of that desire that we value longevity, and it allows for us to ensure that we have Mr. Thornley here for the long haul, which I know that the majority of this body, six of us, agreed was the best course of action, so some of the other comments are quite frankly not worth responding to, and so I'll pass at this time, but I thank Mr. Thornley for his service to the city and this community, I thank the legal team for the work that they did in getting us to this moment, and of course, Ms. Santoio, thank you for giving us the background and really the support to understand the nuances of how this operates, and how it operates in the broader context of the organization.
Thank you very much, I do have a question, the statute that was referenced, that doesn't go into effect until October, correct?
Yeah, Vice, Madam Vice Mayor, it goes into effect December 1st, 2022.
Okay, so it's not even in effect yet, and this is, okay, I, thank you very much for that clarification, and the member from Ward 1, I think unless she forgot since yesterday, brought the same issue up at Tamwah, and that was clarified at that meeting as well, so any other further questions or comments? Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, and I appreciate that from Ms. Jordan, but, you know, the Tamwah response was, one, they had questions whether or not this applies to Tamwah, because they're a different creation entity, but two, whether or not, you know, they'll have to renegotiate that contract, it is applicable, because the contract extends through the effective date, and this contract clearly extends through the effective date, but Mr. Shipman, you said I honed in on the critical words of more or less a class of one, but I think I honed in on the critical word of a policy, and I want to ask you, did you... I honed in on the critical word of a policy. And I want to ask you, did you read any of the legislative history on this when you were going back and crafting this amendment to the bill? It's fairly new.
I didn't spend a lot of time on the legislative history. I think the actual statute is pretty clear in what it, what it states. I mean, that's bolstered by the fact that we do have the 286 provision that makes it clear that you can buy time, local government can buy time for a, an employee. So, you know, I'm confident that what was done here and the clarifications we made in the contract do fully comport with 385, and that's just kind of where we're at, so.
Yeah, you know, I'll respectively issue a different opinion as someone who read the legislative history. It was brought forward by one of our own representatives, concerned about executive pay, not buyouts on the end, but executive pay. And all this body would have to have done, in my view, to do this and comport with certainly the, I think, the letter, but the spirit of the law, differently than, say, the clerk, who also represents, is the other member who represents or reports directly to the council, to the assisted city managers, who often fulfill the duties of the city manager. We could have done that, and I think that would have allayed the current concerns of this very recent legislative law that came in by one of our representatives, Reno, was spearheaded by a Reno Assemblywoman. So I'm still not supporting it because I don't support his continued employment, but I also think it was rather, not a best approach in terms of policy. Thank you, or compliance.
Thank you very much. Any other council members? Councilman Delgado?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I'll be really brief. I know I had to leave early the last time we went through the, uh, the managers' review. And I just want to thank the body for moving forward with its exceptional leadership, and this is deserving in terms of amending its current contract, and so I support it wholeheartedly. And it's into what Councilman Reese stated, it's an opportunity for us to retain leadership that we see is clearly taking place and seeing the morale, seeing the morale change in our community, seeing the morale change in City Hall. So thank you to all of you for supporting that, and I look forward to voting on it. Let's do it.
Very good. I'm looking for a motion. Second motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, at this time, Madam Clerk, I believe we're going to move to the D items.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. We are moving on to item D 1.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, just to clarify, did the prior items have any public comment?
We did take public comment on the consent agenda item, so there's not item-specific, but yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Item D 1, we have no public comment registered.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Vicki Van Buren, Director of Finance, for the record. Item D 1 before you is a resolution concerning the financing of sewer projects, authorizing the Director of Finance, which would be me, to complete an application to utilize the State of Nevada's Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund for the American Flat Project. This project was included in the budget that was adopted, the current year budget, and many presentations have been given about this American Flat Project to council. So I think council is very familiar with this project. This project is a joint project with Truckee Meadows Water Authority. The city's cost share portion is included in the capital improvement plan for the current year, and it was adopted by council. The American Flat Advanced Purified Water Project will provide effluent disposal solution for the Reno-Stead Water Reclamation Facility's expansion that is currently under construction. In order to complete the project, staff is proposing applying for a loan from the State of Nevada's Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund, because we can get those funds at a very good rate. The cost summary for this project, this project is about 118 million. Our share is 70%, and Truckee Meadows Water Authority is 30%. They are applying, there are several grants that are out there, and some applications are out there for those. If those come in, they will be split at the same rate, 70% City of Reno, 30% Truckee Meadows Water Authority. And then the operating cost would be split 50/50. So that leaves our share of this project around $83 million, and we're proposing that 50% of it be, come from the State Revolving Loan Fund, which is the loan that we're talking about today, and then 50% would be cash funded. Right now, in the sewer, in the sewer fund, we have two outstanding obligations out there. We have the 2016 sewer general refunding bonds, and those actually mature in three years in 2025. And then we have the 2020 sewer bonds that are out there. Those will be fully drawn this year. So right now, we are just paying interest on those. Once those are fully drawn this year, we will start paying the principal and interest on those. Some of the... Can you advance, please? Thank you. So when you look at the sewer debt that we have outstanding, and this is just the current debt between those two that we have, it will peak around the fiscal year '24. And then that debt, as that 2016 sewer refund bond pays off, then it drops significantly back down. When we look at this, this particular loan and bond that we're looking at going out for, we have four years of actuals on here. And the main thing you want to take from this are the debt coverage at the bottom. So we have 6.3% debt coverage, around six and seven, and then budgeted, we have 4% because we had anticipated the loan from the 2020 bonds coming online. So we'll be paying principal and interest on that. So that's why it jumps up a little bit. For this particular, for general obligation bonds backed like this, the ratio that is required by law is one times. So when you look at this, we are actually excellent. We have excellent coverage to move forward with this. When you look at sufficiency of the net pledged revenues, what this chart is going to show you is the net pledged revenues from the previous page, and that's based on our current year budget, it does not include any growth factor. So you'll see that same 37 million all the way down. So we're not anticipating any growth. That's just the most conservative approach that you can take to this to prove that we have debt service coverage to cover this debt. So you'll see that the debt in 2024, that actually will jump up as we move forward with this debt, or if council chooses to move forward with this debt. It will move up to the 11 million, and we're still at a 3.3% debt ratio. And again, required by law is one time. So we are still excellent at that point. Then in 2025, when that, the other bond pays off, we go back up again. So you see that drop because, and then we will still just have the two bonds outstanding at that point. When you look at cash balance projections over the years, this assumes, the cash balance is the line in the middle, and then your revenues are the yellows, and your expenses are the blues. The yellows also include where we project where we would need to take out bonds or loans. So in 2024, you see that big jump in the green bar because we anticipate having this loan in order to do this project. You'll see that the cash balance looks like it drops off. Really, it does, really, it's more of a leveling effect, because these projects are so large. They take anywhere from three to five years to do these projects. When we do a cash balance projection like this, we assume that we do the project in the year where it's budgeted, but really, it's over a long period of time. And so you'll see the cash will really be more level than what you see on here. And that, that concludes my presentation on this item. And really, all this item is asking for council to do at this point. It's not issuing bonds or anything at this point. It's just asking that we can apply for the application to the state to use that program if council chooses in the future to go forward with the bonds.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers have questions and comments on D 1. Councilmember Reese?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Van Buren. And I wish I'd had that presentation. It wasn't, it wasn't in the packet on Friday, was it?
No, it was not.
Yeah. But I'll try and go back a few slides. And I brought some information, questions I've been asking since 2019, late 2019. And we're getting close to having answers, but this, and I said this to the clerk, but they're questions prior to decisions being requested for assuming additional sewer debt. And some are getting answered, but some aren't. I guess the most basic one right now is, and you'll probably need to bring Mr. Flansburgh up, does this bond to do the American Flat Project get us where we need to be to open up the 4 MGD? Is it anticipated that there'll be any other large capital needs to get to the 4 MGD?
I'm going to defer that to Mr. Flansburgh.
Thank you.
All right. John Flansburgh, Regional Infrastructure Administrator. For this item, Councilwoman Brekis, you'd asked the question in regards to, will this get us to the 4 MGD? Yes, it will. This will be the, this is what we're anticipating asking on the loan side from State Revolving Loan Fund to be able to complete this project. And just for the general discussion of the council, this, this particular amount of money that we have is really the growth component. It gets paid back through connection fees as they come on. So to your point, as that allows us for the full use of the 4 MGD, those connection fees come on, that helps to pay back. It brings us this money back into the fund. Entities don't pay cash for these kind of growth projects. They don't have the kind of cash, because you're, you're building the capacity, so then you can actually sell that capacity in, in those chunks of time. So.
So, so to summarize, the, the reservoir concept is gone? Or the pipeline over to the tribo lands is gone?
No, that's not true. That would be for future expansion beyond 4 MGD.
Beyond 4 MGD, okay.
There, there could be some benefit in bringing something on either one of those a little sooner, but, but yeah.
This gets us open. And then we still haven't had an update on the Tumwurf master plan. Is there, and you know, and I haven't seen it. I know a lot of people have, but I haven't. Is any debt presumed or capital presumed with that?
So to answer your question, yes, there is capital presumed for the expansion at Tumwurf, and that has been included in the cash flow analysis that was shared by Vicki Van Buren in, in this presentation.
Okay. And then the third question is, when is the ordinance coming forward to address the connection fees that have been stuck flat since 20?
14.
14. And sewer rates, in my mind, have gone up about 40%. And I learned from Ms. Van Buren, on October, they're going up 71%. In December, we'll know 7.1%. And in December, we'll know what next year's increase will be. But I presume it's 7.1 again. So we're probably looking at 60% since I've been on the council rate in sewer rates, but connection fees are flat.
So to be clear, we will be bringing, we're doing the public engagement side on those fees with our development community, and we'll be bringing those back to you in the fall for that conversation. And then as far as it goes to the sewer rates, those are adjusted only by Consumer Price Index. And just because we've had a large Consumer Price Index, that's the 7.1% bump that we expect October 1st.
I know. But the connection fee, okay.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Councilman Reese?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Mr. Flansburgh, first of all, your new title, can you say that again?
It's a big mouthful. Regional Infrastructure Administrator.
And I have it as RIA, Regional Infrastructure Administrator. Well, first of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
I think that's really a big step in our region's future. And with you being involved in it, that gives me a lot of comfort, because I know that there are a lot of regional infrastructure projects kind of coming down the pipeline, percolating, different things that you have shepherded to a certain point by virtue of having been in our public works team for these many years. But now the focus allows you to do some focus too. So I'm very excited about that. What, what is the public's takeaway from that new title? What do you want the public to know about it?
You know, I think what we really want strategically, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act is bringing a lot of unprecedented amount of funding coming in for infrastructure needs. And by focusing on this, it becomes very strategic. And so I appreciate the leadership from our city manager and for the support of this council to allow us to be able to do this, that we can be able to target those funds that are coming in that are not going to be a formally grant that just go out to all the communities. This, these are ones we have to compete for, so that we can put our best foot forward on all of those infrastructure projects that are out there. And, and I just appreciate the opportunity to be able to represent the city and represent this region in doing so.
Well, I do think it's a very exciting opportunity for our community. And like I said, I'm excited that you're the one who's going to be heading that up. I want to ask about the American Flat Advanced Purified Water Project, just generally speaking. Tell us a little bit about where the, I will call it the science of it, has been over the last six months, because when we last saw you, we had some great information. But I don't know if the public is always tracking. So is there something you want to share with us about the actual project and what has happened there and some of the scientific, you know, analyses that's happened in the last six months?
Well, I guess, for starters, we received the American Society of Civil Engineers Environmental Project of the Year for that project. Another thing of great note was in March, we brought the Water Environment Federation's Leading Edge Technologies Conference, the world conference to Reno, to our region. And that specifically, it was held here in 2000, it was held in the United States in 2010 in Phoenix. It hasn't been back to the United States until this year, and it was brought here. And a lot, a lot of that was accredited to the work that we're doing with this project. So thank you for that.
Well, I may have other questions, but I suppose at the conclusion, I just want to say, great project. The team has worked very hard. You've been kind enough to take me out there now, I think, three or four times. And I'm just very proud of the leadership that you've exhibited and that our region has exhibited on the project. And I think this is a necessary component of that, and obviously the next step towards fulfilling the needs of the North Valleys. I think our residents in the North Valleys deserve to have a project that supports what's going on out there. And so ultimately, I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. It's a very exciting day.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in round one? Councilwoman Doer?
Yeah, I just wanted to also thank you, John. You know, this is something that regionally we've all supported with Tumwah, with the university. This, we're taking some important next steps, and I'm glad you're leading the charge. You know the most for sure about it. You're part of the creative brain trust behind it. So I am very supportive. So thank you.
Fantastic. Okay, round two, Councilwoman Brekis, three minutes.
Yeah, Mr. Flansburgh, so the RISWORF 2 MGD expansion will not rely upon a reservoir or effluent piping anywhere else. We're just going to be recycling it straight away when we open up the 2 MGD. Is that, is that what you're saying?
So when we open up the, I mean, it, it, think, it's a slow grow, right? But we were able to switch it quickly and be able to have a certain component going in for this advanced purified water and storing it. So you mentioned, you mentioned a reservoir. The reservoir is going to be underground. It's going to be the aquifer.
Yes.
And so, and so that's, that's the real benefit that we have here, which we've explained in previous presentations. So, so that, that is the big piece. But we will still be serving our reuse customers with the Class A effluents, not the advanced purified water, but we'll still be sending our, our effluent customers we have today, the quantity of water they need when they need it during irrigation season.
I get that. It was just that one point in time, there was a $96 million or so reservoir on some BLM land, above-ground reservoir. And then there was also this concept of piping some water over to the Reno Indian, Sparks Indian Colony that has some Hungry Valley land. And so that's off the table, not a capital expense we're looking at. The only thing we're going to be doing to open up the gates for the increased expansion is to be purifying the water at American Flats and then putting it into the aquifer. And we can do that, you know, we, we're ready to do that without any more capital beyond this, I understand. And the open date for that is going to be?
I, I don't have that exact date of when, when that will be completed. But I just want to be clear, there is still looking at a reservoir or looking at the Reno Sparks Indian Colony Hungry Valley proposal, but that's for beyond 4 MGD growth. So I just want to make sure that we're all clear.
Okay, so the 2 MGD is putting it in. Yeah, I understand that. And then I do, I think I have 59 seconds left. And I will be going over the financials with Ms. Van Buren's, because maybe the questions I'm getting in there, I'm looking to are in there. But where are we at on the STUMWORF agreement? Is the rates paid by STUMWORF users, those go straight over to the counties, so they're not being pulled back by us for any use in that collection system? Is that true? We have that collection system responsibility?
That is true.
But the connection fees come to us, correct?
The service is provided by the South Truckee Meadows Plant, Washoe County RunSat Plant. The connection fees go to Washoe County. The user fees go to Washoe County.
The user fees go to the Washoe County?
Their rate of user fees.
Okay. So Tumworf user fees come to us.
That is correct. For our, for our citizens, our, those who serve.
Yeah, that's a continuing inequity that I have because I know that Tumwurf connection fees are going to pay for this expansion.
Okay, Councilman Breckus, time is up. Anybody else have any questions or comments in round two? Okay, seeing none, looking for motion. Councilwoman Weber.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I move to approve the staff recommendation.
Have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Breckus?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to support because I, I think we're showing ourselves to be really good at spending money and borrowing money and, you know, contracting out with those. But we really don't have the overall steps in place that we need. And those, I will identify is the relationship of, you know, the sewer fund to this goal of setting up stormwater utility, which frankly, I feel is in jeopardy at this point. Two, the equity with the Tumwurf rate structure and re-engineering that contract with the county. And three, absolutely the connection fees. Every day, a connection fee comes through for growth, whether it's a warehouse or a single-family residential subdivision, stuck at 2014 numbers. While our residents are looking at a 7.1 increase, and that's hitting renters and housing costs, we're not managing this function well. So I won't be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Okay, I believe we're on item D2. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. We have no public comment on this item.
Good morning, good sir.
Good morning to you guys. Madam Vice Mayor, City Council, for the record, Ryan Byrd. Good to have you back. I'm here to buy a piece of land today to have a satellite facility to support the North Valleys. Oh, boy. Okay, back in, during the budget process, council approved a CIP portion for sewer and streets to facilitate a satellite facility for the North Valleys. Staff tried to get ahead of this. So about December of 2021, we formed a team at Maintenance and Operations at the Corp yard, consisting of Lori Miles and other folks to go out and start looking at land. And what we quickly found is that as, as we found that land, it was disappearing just as quick as we could find it. So what we did to lay the groundwork is we crafted a, a letter of intent and a sales agreement with a piece of land that we found that'd be absolutely suitable for this need to bring that before you guys today. And Councilman Weber joined us on that land to, to take a tour. So what we're here, we're asking for authorization on behalf of the, the LOI and the purchase sale agreement to move forward. That would enable us to do the due diligence, the closing costs, the, the escrow for the purchase of this land. And this is a huge monumental step, or I'd say phase one, to secure this land, after which we would provide updates and a plan for the facility layout and what that, what that support mechanism for sewers and streets would be and what that would look like for the North Valleys. To give you a reference, right here, this is the corner of Lemon and North Virginia. Just to the north of that, we have the freeway system. So this parcel that we identified is in yellow. It is uniquely shaped. So most of the warehousing you see around it did not like this land because they couldn't do much with it. For the folks in residential, they can't build on it. It's not suitable for them. To the south, that vacant lot, those are actually warehouses now. That's how quickly the things are being built in the North Valleys. So specifically to us, we're, we're looking at purchasing these two parcels to make one. The land right now is flat. It has utilities, has some fencing. It's, it's fantastically close to Highway 395, Stead Boulevard, Lemon, and the Red Rock Road. This is a little closer look of the land. That shape is absolutely perfect for us. To the, I guess that would be southeast, you have some residential. And quite candidly, I think we're far enough away for the noise to not be a problem with those folks. When we take this a step further and talk to our folks in community development, we're situated perfectly for the master plan, for the capital improvement stuff and cooperative use that we would be looking at. It dovetails right in nicely with our zoning. The fact that we are surrounded mainly by industrial, that's very compatible with uses that we're trying to, trying to insinually put in, put in place. And what we're talking about, for those of you who've been to our corporation, we're talking about adding to what we already have a 1640 commercial row. This is probably my favorite slide. I think what we accomplish in this, in this slide, to be strategic with your plans, is one, we have no support mechanism in the North Valleys, none at all. This enables us to save fuel. It doesn't, it enables us to save wear and tear on our vehicles, so extending the life of those vehicles. We can actually provide a timely response to our customers. I know Madam, Madam Weber saw the size of our vehicles that we take from central Reno to the North Valleys. It's an hour process time, and those vehicles are 20,000 to 30,000 pounds. It, it takes time and a lot of effort just to get them there. The, the other thing that we can do with this site is provide additional operations in the future with our fleet department, our BTS folks, and maybe some other needs that the city may have in those North Valleys. And the other thing it does for our employees is it reduces employee commute times because folks already live in those valleys, so they could actually drive to work. And what I lastly want to leave you with is during the pandemic, we had no alternate place to stage. We staged employees at a lift station to survive the pandemic. This gives us the availability in the North Valleys to actually have a facility where people have, have an office and support. And by the way, almost a third of our lift stations that you heard earlier are in the North Valleys, and they give us some issues. So with that, that concludes what I have to talk about. I'm here to answer any kind of questions.
May council members have any questions or comments? Councilwoman Weber?
If anyone wants to make comments, I just want to say that this is, I started off thinking that it wasn't just the best situation. And when I got out there and staff was out there, they've done a lot of hard work. Properties are going so quickly. This was, this turned out to be a really good property because there's not a lot of housing around it. And I, I think we're going to keep looking to see if we can find something else. But I think we move forward, absolutely. I think this project is a great project. And especially because of the heavy equipment that they have can't be going back and forth. And having it out there for, for all the purposes is just really pretty awesome. And so if there's not anyone that is going to speak, I'm ready to make a motion whenever.
Councilman Reese, followed by Councilwoman Breckus.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd, for the presentation. I suppose two things are true for me. Number one, I think that the community in the North Valleys really needs a facility like this. Because as I understand it, a lot of times, our employees are certainly coming down into the save Reno, collecting what they need to go do the work, and then heading back north. So I think that from my standpoint, having it closer to the community in which a lot of the work is being deployed and, uh, equipment is being deployed and the workers are doing the work, that's a benefit for the folks living in the North Valleys. So I think it's a great opportunity as we have expanded our city and as our city continues to grow, having more than one yard is, I think, a critical component for our success as a city overall. So as to the folks who are living and residing in that community, I think that also signals the commitment to that area. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, as to our employees, I mean, the employees who utilize the Corp yard and who are there each day and then use that as the hub to then jump off and do the work that they're doing, I think they also deserve a facility that's closer to where they're actually doing the work. It cuts down on their, you know, commute time, we'll call it, between sites. It, it makes for a more productive day as you're not moving back in and out of the city all over the place. And in that regard, I, I just want to take the opportunity, of course, to say thank you for the folks who do work in our Public Works, our sewer teams, our maintenance, our signs, our roadways, all the folks that come out of that yard are really doing the, the work of the city. And, you know, I think someone mentioned earlier, you know, unsung hero. They are unsung heroes, I too, I, I believe very strongly for our city. So, you know, I think that as a city grows, it experiences growing pains. And some of that is seen in our capital projects and our improvements to infrastructure. This is sort of a no-brainer for me in, in as much as I believe that it's a necessary component of a growing city. So happy to see and support the efforts that you've undertaken here and appreciate really the work that's gone into it from your end in getting us to this point. So I, I'll be supportive, and I encourage my colleagues to do the same. I think you're doing a great job, Mr. Byrd, and appreciate the work that you've done today.
Thank you very much. Great words. Councilwoman Breckus?
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Byrd. I appreciate the need. What, how much did we budget for this property acquisition, this FY?
So we budgeted 2.5 million, split between streets and sewers.
Okay, split between street and sewer.
Correct. This, this process is going to be split 50/50.
Okay, so that's more into the sewer. Ms. Van Buren, is she here? Yeah. Have you, you're putting together the CIP for the 22, 23. Do you have this as a project and show in the out-years the cost? Because obviously, we, a land acquisition doesn't get us what we need. Do you have a multi-year? Does the CIP show a multi-year path to complete this project?
Vicky Van Buren, for the record, Director of Finance. This project was, has been anticipated for a number of years. At this time, I do not, I do not have a design going forward, but that would be something that we would be looking at and building in.
Okay, so I'll support, because I know there's some choices coming forward for federal money and how we spend that. And I think this would be a perfect project for that because, you know, the council, look, we just took out loans for the Moana Pool. We just took out loans for the police station. I think that bond also put into consideration design for a new fire station. So we got that ahead of us too. Now we're embarking upon a satellite public works station. I think these concepts really need to be understood within, you know, your five, 10-year projections and how we can get there. And on those out-years, a real faithful CIP process will show this is a five-year budget project of 8 million, for example. So 22, we buy the land. 23, we go into design, that's 500. 24, we build the structure. And 25, we finish it off. So everyone knows, we're looking at a multi-year nut. And we've got to get there, in my view, because, you know, we're, we're probably seeing the economy turn here pretty soon. And I just don't know how much more general obligation debt we can take on. And you can put in those out-years suggestive funding. And one of those, in my view, if we're splitting it between street, is the reform that's needed to the RTC process. There's no reason why RTC gas fuel tax money should not be used to pay for operations of our street network. And so I think we're going to be searching at some point for a creative financing of this project. So I'll just express that concern again about a lot of these general fund capital projects, because there's a lot on the books right now. And, and I just don't know how her projections show us taking on more debt.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Weber, may I get a motion?
Yeah, can I just ask one more thing? I, I think for the record, Mr. Byrd, if you would just comment again, so the public hears it, about the infrastructure that's already on-site, which is really a savings right there.
Yeah, for the record, Ryan Byrd, Maintenance and Operation. For one, the land's actually flat, as you are aware. We have water, sewer, power. We have a shed that we can actually store stuff. We have fence. So we already have a lot of amenities right now. We have an approach to come on and off. I mean, if we could have had this site during the flood, I can't tell you how many trucks we sent up in 17, resent, brought them back. Then we had a break in 18. In 19, it decided to rain again. We probably could have saved two trucks, and our trucks are about a half a million dollars apiece now. So we've got a lot of stuff going for us right now.
Right. And on the site that was brought out when I was there was the great big, huge, whatever, what is it?
That's a sewer flusher. That's a half million.
Yes. So that is what is so important about this. Okay, so I am.
Wait, oh, I'm sorry. May I ask another question?
Yes.
Madam Presiding Officer.
Thank you.
Thank you. When you showed up the map, you showed it maybe separated by one or two parcels. And if you could bring up the map, from the historic Grandview Terrace, also known as Black Springs. That's a very historic subdivision in our community. It's where black GIs, GIs, when they were reverting, returning from World War II with the GI Bill, were precluded from buying property in Reno. So they settled this subdivision out there under racist, because of racist practices and policies. And I've been aware of this community for about 20 years, but I've heard some grumbling recently. They don't like the changed character of warehouses everywhere. What, what buffer do we have from them? Because I would presume we're going to be doing a 24-hour operation as needed. What, who owns the intervening parcels? Mr. Byrd?
Are you referring to the parcels between ours and the one to the, the east?
Yeah, yeah. It's, um, the streets all have like Malcolm Way and, you know.
Yeah, I, I'm unclear on that. But what, what I will share with you as far as the, the noise pollution, it's pretty darn loud right now.
Well, yeah.
As Councilwoman Weber is aware, I don't anticipate our noise being half as loud as what, what they're enduring right now.
Yeah, they're not happy up there. Did you talk to the county? You know, as we've annexed over there so much, do they have any, you know, their, their burden responsibilities have lessened as ours have increased? Did, did you scout around to see if they had any land available?
So starting back in December of '21, we, we spoke with the county. We looked at land that we already own.
Yeah.
We, we looked at parks. We looked at land anywhere we could find a parcel and came up empty-handed.
Okay, okay.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Weber.
I just want to say that this is a great parcel. I'm very familiar with Grandview Terrace, Black Springs. It, it, they already have so much noise from 395 and as well as the traffic that is on North Virginia. This is not going to, I, I don't believe it's going to be a problem because that was one of the first things I, I even asked about. And there's mitigation ways that we can make it work if, if need be, if need be. So, but I, I do move to approve the staff recommendations.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right.
Madam Vice Mayor, is it appropriate? Can I thank Lori Miles for carrying a heavy load on this? Without her, this wouldn't have been possible.
Let's embarrass her further. We love to do that.
Thank you.
Great job.
Congratulations, everybody. Okay, item D3. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
Madam Mayor, or Madam Vice Mayor, we have none registered.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. Make sure I have the right one. Good morning, Madam Vice Mayor, council members. Monica Cochran, Housing Neighborhood Development Manager, for the record. Today, I'm here to briefly go over the Copper Mesa Apartment Affordable Housing Project and request a reduction of sewer connection and building permit fees. Did I do that? State law changed during the 2019 legislative session, enabling local governments to reduce or subsidize impact fees, building permit fees, and sewer connection fees for affordable housing that meet certain criteria. In February of 2020, council adopted an ordinance establishing this process in RMC 1.08. I can see better without these. Got new glasses. I'm trying to figure them out. Uh, let's see, where are we? This project may look familiar to you since it's already gone through the planning process. And we brought a resolution forward in February of '22 supporting a volume cap request. Copper Mesa Apartments are a 290-unit apartment development located north of Silver Lake and west of Red Rock Road. All the units will be under 60% AMI, and the complex is located within one mile of an employment area, making the project eligible for an 85% reduction in fees. The applicant is requesting 1.342, 192 million. The applicant is requesting 1.342, 192 million in sewer connection fees and 241,918 in building permit fees. As stated earlier, the entire complex is 60% and below AMI, with four units being at 50% and below AMI. The income restrictions related to this reduction are a minimum of 20 years, however, this development will have a 30-year affordability period tied to it. This chart, you can see the projects that have already been approved with a total of over $2 million in subsidies and created 467 new units. And you can also see the projects coming forward today, coming, which will total approximately 2.9 million and create 542 new units, with a total of 1,009 new affordable units and a total subsidy of $5,41,096. Based on our home projects that were approved within the city limits during this last cycle, we're not expecting additional applications until next year for this, for these waivers. And we're also having conversations with the state and submitting an application for funds to help support this program. Here is the recommended motion. I'm available for questions and I also have the developers available remotely to answer any project-specific questions.
Great, thank you very much. Any council members have any questions or comments on this item? Exciting. Councilmember Delgado.
Quick question, what's the 60% AMI? What's that number look like for a family of four?
For a family of four, it's around $50,000.
$50,000, and so what's the, you said the other one's 40%?
There's a 50, yeah, there's a 50. So it would be around 40 something thousand. I can get those exact numbers for you.
All right, I think that's good. And I think for the council, for the public, when you guys come with AMIs, it'd be a little bit more helpful for the community, kind of say, what are those market rates? Helps us out, as we know the acronyms, but sometimes the community isn't as aware. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Doerr.
Yeah, and also, I think Mr. Delgado brings up a great point and it is also helpful if you could give us actually what the rent, what you're expecting the rent to be. Do you know in this case?
In this case, I don't have the exact rent.
No, roughly?
The developers are available and they might have what the rent, the current rent would be for a 60% or 50% unit, if we want to bring them over.
Are they here or I don't?
They're, I think they're online. We probably have to bring them in.
Yes.
As they're coming on, the other present, part of your presentation note that showed the number of units that are coming online, that are in process and that we anticipate the 1,009, whatever it was, that's really good information and you'll just continue to bring that forward, right?
Yes, ma'am.
But to Councilmember Delgado and Doerr's comments, maybe a little box of an example with an asterisk, that understanding that could change, just to kind of understand what it means out of someone's pocket.
I thought I usually bring it with me and I missed it on my desk this time.
Is that posted online, that presentation you just gave? Is the presentation you just gave?
It was changed yesterday. I mean, we added a slide yesterday, but it was, it was presented, it was attached to packets.
Right, but you'll update it with your most recent?
Yes.
Okay, we have Joey Lunsford on. Joey, if you're on, did you hear the question?
I did hear the question. Hello, council members. As far as rents go, one bedrooms will start at 994 for restricted rents for the 60% AMI and then the 50% will be 819.
Great, great information. Thank you for that. Councilwoman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, and I may have a question for Mr. Lunsford, but maybe start with Ms. Cochran and also maybe a comment to one of my colleagues. So Councilmember Doerr has been really working very hard, both largely behind the scenes and goes unnoticed, about issues related to affordability in this community. And so I, A, want to sort of give a shout out to her in the work that she's doing. She's, you know, trying to push the envelope and ask the right questions. And so when we did our briefing on this, there were a number of questions that were asked that perhaps are beyond the scope of our discussion today, but it's about the nature of the length of leases, the questions that we're all asking about, how do we deal with the rising cost of rents? And again, my point in sort of not putting Councilmember Doerr on the hot seat, but on the shout-out seat for always thinking of our community and for really asking the questions which are sometimes hard and have, sometimes don't have a solution. And so I just want to thank her for that. And I know, Ms. Cochran, your group in hand is also thinking critically about this because obviously all of us are concerned about being priced out. And so for our most vulnerable citizens, our seniors, our disabled folks, veterans, it just is becoming a very complex thing. So that's sort of my starting point. The second thing is that as to the Copper Mesa Program and for Mr. Lunsford's benefit, this is outstanding project. I'm very happy to support the requests here. The city council has very few tools that it can really use in the toolbox as it deals with some of the crisis moments that we're having as to affordability. And so each time that we come with a project like this, and we've had a few of them come in front of us in the last couple of years, I think it is a good moment to stop and reflect on the nature of the tools that we do have as a body. And it is a choice. This is not like some rubber stamp where the city of Reno is just agreeing to do a thing because we can agree to do a thing. Sometimes when they, we get requests from the public to support a thing and we issue a, you know, a notice of our intention to support the project, we're not actually committing our dollars. And so this is an example where the council is saying, we, as a policy and as a body, want to see affordability and affordable projects brought into the city. And to do that, we have to put money behind it. And that's what these are examples in the sewer connection fee and also the building fee. And so again, we want to do more. I think our colleagues, each of us on this body is looking for ways in which we can insert ourselves in the conversation. And it's when we have good developers who are willing to come into the city, take all the layered elements to it, to turn around and then be able to produce a project, that I think that we're having that private-public partnership that results in good things. So my hope is that not only that would the developer, you know, work on this project, but find more and we'll figure out where we can, our source of funds is obviously not unlimited in our own right, but we'll find the ways that we can plug in as well. So I may have a second round of questions, but those were my initial thoughts based on the presentation.
Okay. Councilwoman Doerr.
Yeah, thank you and thanks for that shout out. You're right, I have not talked a lot about this except to the specific people involved. So just to reiterate, my first question though is, this does not say senior, so is it senior or is it general population?
This one is families.
Families. So do you have to have kids or is it just any family? I mean, is it, what is family, just general?
Let Elaine speak to that.
Good morning, Council Vice Mayor, council members. Elaine Wiseman, for the record. This particular project is unique in that it serves individuals up to large families. So there are actually some four-bedroom units which are desperately needed in this area. So anywhere from, you know, one person up to larger families.
Okay, and so earlier it was said that it's aimed at people making about 50,000, the 60% AMI.
That number is for a family of four. That AMI 50,000 roughly is 60% of the AMI for a family of four.
So what if you are, you know, like a single parent, maybe with one kid, in one of these units, what would you have to earn that? Still 50,000 or?
No, no, the limits would go down from there. So 50,000 is four people. Three people, it would be, you know, lower than 50,000. You couldn't earn more than like probably in the low 40s and so on, so forth.
Okay, so another question I have is, is the 1,000 a month that was mentioned, 994, 1,000 a month, is that inclusive of utilities or are those separate?
I would imagine, we'll have to defer to Joey, but normally when they do talk about their rents, they include the utility allowance.
Is that true, Mr. Lunsford?
No, that, no, the rent I mentioned, they will be given a utility allowance on top of that to pay the all-inclusive rent. So the actual rent coming out of their pocket is that 994 and then they'll, they'll be given a utility allowance on top of that.
What does that mean, a utility allowance? I'm not familiar with that term. What does it mean in practical terms? Like they're allowed $100 towards their electric or something or what does it mean?
Yeah, so they're, they're allowed certain specific dollars that are designated by HUD to specific utilities. So in this case, it's, it's everything but their electric.
Not their electric, so it would be like gas and water and trash or something?
Water, sewer, yeah.
Gas, water, sewer, would be included.
Yeah, those will be included in that allowance and then the owner, we would, we would pay the water and sewer and gas.
You would? You would?
Yes.
Yeah.
The owner.
You're not the owner, okay. What, what are you?
We are the owner of the project.
Okay, okay.
All right, second round, Councilman Reese.
Well, and I thought maybe Ms. Hickman or Ms. Cochran, I'm not sure who would answer it best, but I wanted to say, the, Wiseman, I'm sorry, we go back a long time, I apologize since high school, so sorry about that. So I want to make sure I understand that the 60% of AMI and the numbers we're talking about, are there also ways that that number could be reduced by a subsidy? Meaning, are these eligible for other kinds of subsidies, either from the city, the county, the state, the federal government? Are there Section 8 implications? I'm just trying to understand how big of a deal it is. Because I think it's a big deal that the project is being contemplated and will be built and it has these numbers attached to it. So I'm trying to figure out what else we can celebrate in those units. Is there a way to talk about that as well?
With this particular project, you know, the funding is set, the subsidies are there, it's, you know, a lasagna of layering. I stole that from someone, but I really like it, so I keep using it. So these are the subsidies that this project is set by. Can these folks still use a Section 8 voucher if they have one? Yes. Is there, could they get possibly rental and deposit assistance from the city program? Yes. But as far as the rents go and the AMIs, those are set by HUD and the rents are set by the AMIs. So they can't pay more than 30% of their, of their income towards their rent. And that's just a general calculation. It gets a little squirrely depending on how many people, number of units, they'll do like a 1.5 for a one-bedroom and so it's set that way. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Okay, any other questions, Councilwoman Doerr?
Yeah, Mr. Lunsford, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. I'm just curious, because I've run into this on a lot of other projects, the length of the lease, do you know what you're contemplating?
The length of the resident lease?
Yes.
Or the lease of land?
No, the resident lease.
The resident lease is a standard 12-month lease.
Okay. One of the things that we've been talking about is potentially having longer leases for these folks so that there is fewer rent increases, because rent increases do float with the AMI. I mean, that's your max. You don't have to charge that, but that's a max. So what I would hate to see is it's 1,000 today, our AMI goes up and next year, in just one year, it's 1,100 or 1,200, the max. Is there a way to kind of, I guess, stabilize these rents, either with a longer lease or, you know, a commitment to not go to the max? I mean, are any of these possible? I've talked already to our staff, I've talked to the people that deal with the home funds, but now you're the guy, you're the owner. So I'm asking you.
No, it's a good question. So there is a max that we can increase it every year.
Right.
We cannot, we cannot max it out at the AMI. It's, I believe it's a 5% increase is the max that we can actually increase the rents. I can follow up with the exact numbers, but if the AMI went up, you know, 7% next year, we could not charge that resident after 12 months a 7% increase.
Well, that is a, thank you for sharing, that is news to me. I know some others that have charged the max and it's above 5%. So I'm going to ask our staff to just follow that trail and learn more about that if you could, so we can understand the impacts when we approve these projects. I would love that to be true.
Absolutely, and feel free to reach out to me directly, to any member of your staff, we're happy to help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lunsford. Councilwoman Weber, give me a motion.
Yes, can I make a motion? I didn't hear, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you so much. I move to approve the staff recommendation. And great job.
I'll say again, Brackus.
We have a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, fantastic. This is great.
I just wanted...
You know what we didn't ask? Like how long would the construction, when will this be open? Was that on there?
Yeah, so we're contemplating a construction start in September of this year. So our first units will be turned over middle of summer of next year with 100% construction complete at the end of 2023.
Nice, fantastic. Thank you for, thank you for all your work in this area, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you for your...
Thanks, you bet. Okay, Madam Clerk, we are on item, D4. Yes, D4. We just did D3, correct?
This is, this is me also, and before I start, I just wanted...
Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, we do not have any public comment registered.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Again, Monica Cochran, for the record. Before I started, I just pulled up some numbers so you could just get kind of a gist of what an AMI would be for a single-family home. 60% would be 35,100 and for a 30% one-person residence, it would be 17,550.
For one person?
Yep, for one person.
But these don't have, are we talking about D4? Do they have one bedrooms or?
They had one bedrooms also. Yep, I was just trying to, yep, I was just trying to give you a range from one person up to a family of four.
50,000.
And I can send you the chart also.
Great. All right, fantastic, take it away.
Okay, today I'm here again to briefly go over Pinion Apartments Affordable Housing Project and request a reduction of sewer connection and building permit fees. I think I'll go ahead and skip this slide about the legislation since we just went over it. This project may also look familiar to you since we also brought a resolution forward to adopt a, or we brought a resolution forward for supporting volume cap for this project also in February of '22. Pinion Apartments is a 252-unit apartment development located south of Moana Lane and west of Neal Road. All the units, again, will be under 60% AMI and the complex is located within a mixed-use area, making the project eligible for an 85% reduction. The applicant is requesting 1,666,319 in sewer connection fee subsidies and 252,667.70 in building permit fees. As stated earlier, the entire complex is 60% AMI and below, with eight units at 50% and eight units at 30% using HUD-VASH vouchers. So this one also has some units with deeper subsidies. The income restrictions related to this reduction is also 20, at least 20 years and the project will have a 30-year affordability period. And again, we have this same chart showing what has been used so far, how many units and then what the total will be. So if these two projects are approved today, we will be at 1,009 new affordable units in the last couple of years being built with a little over 5 million in subsidy. And here is the recommended motion and again, I have the... And here is the recommended motion, and again, I have a developer um um available for this uh for any questions that you have remotely. I was trying to think of the right word.
Thank you very much. So just to confirm, and I I feel like we want to shout it from the rooftops, today, if this is approved, we are bringing onboard five hundred and forty-two affordable units, just in the actions today.
Correct.
Okay, fantastic. Any council members have any questions or comments on this? Councilman Delgado, this is your one.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I I had a chance to speak with the developers. My understanding is that they've also uh purchased other uh apartment complex multifamily units here in our community and have been doing an extensive amount of rehab work, which I appreciate. You know, we're we're bringing in new um interested parties, new investors, but they also, uh, you know, it's pretty hard on them with respect to making sure that the projects are are up to par in their quality, and I appreciated that they're purchasing, again, uh old tired buildings and and really pushing on making sure we take care of a lot of those slum lords for many years that have kind of taken advantage of many of our families. And so this is a parcel that's been um sitting vacant for quite some time, and so I'm looking forward to this uh taking shape and 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 breaking ground, and will give some uh some of those families a new quality and some new uh upbringing in terms of uh that what I've been able to see anyway, so I move to approve.
Thank you very much. Any other council members have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Okay, this time we're gonna go into break until one P M. Thanks, everybody.
Have a good day.
All right, Madam Mayor, if you are ready, we can go ahead and reconvene.
All right, thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Um, I believe we're gonna be starting with item D one, is that correct, Vice Mayor? D five? Oh, okay. Wow. You really were.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. For the record, Lance Ferrato, Business License Manager. Before today is a brief presentation regarding the city's efforts to mitigate local businesses' financial distress with regard to COVID nineteen, which included financial and operational leniency during the state of emergency. As a result of the termination of emergency, and now that the city's exemptions have concluded, staff is asking for direction going forward with certain fees, specifically those related to outdoor business activity. So a quick timeline, as you all remember, the emergency declaration was issued March twelfth, twenty twenty, and about a month later, council approved the first round of relief to address business closures and the impacts of being shuttered. In January twenty twenty-one, council approved a second program to further assist businesses, and then finally, just this May, the termination uh of state of emergency was issued. So as I mentioned, the city implemented numerous relief measures, including waivers, extensions, and payment plans. Additionally, businesses were able to apply for assistance through the city's CARES allocation, as well as other state and federal programs. I'd also like to mention that Councilmember Reese's new biggest little business partnership program will continue to help qualifying small businesses at this time. Along with financial assistance, the city created multiple exemptions for businesses to continue operations, including the temporary allowance of drive-throughs, curbside pickup, uh, packaged alcohol allowances, as well as to-go alcohol. As I said, these measures have ceased now that the state of emergency has concluded. So what we're seeing here is an increase in outdoor business activity, particularly in the midtown area. More businesses are beginning to operate outside of their traditional four walls. Reno Municipal Code requires permitting in many of these instances, specifically outdoor dining permits, encroachment permits, uh, which are necessary when operating in the public right of way. So during the state of emergency, just six businesses utilize relief, the relief opportunities. However, staff estimates that ten to twelve more businesses will need permitting if they wish to continue operating in this manner. To give you an idea of the associated fees, encroachment permits are about two dollars per square foot annually and that plus an application fee, and an outdoor dining permits are five hundred and seventy-six dollars as a one-time fee. So in consideration, a temporary fee reduction or waiver of fees associated with outdoor business activity could prove to benefit the city and businesses alike by creating more business opportunities within minimal cost to the city. And lastly, at this time, staff is asking direction on how to proceed. One possible recommendation might be to direct staff to bring back a resolution, reducing or waiving these fees relative to outdoor businesses. However, Angela and I are here to discuss any possibilities and answer any questions that you might have at this time.
All right, thank you, Lance.
Thank you very much. Um, thank you for bringing this forward. I know um we all came together during the pandemic under the leadership of the mayor to try to find ways to help businesses, you know, survive in any ways that they could and have the social distancing, so um we were quick to implement using their parking lots or the sidewalks and et cetera to spread out to be able to do those things. And and I think with the sidewalks being widened, particularly through the midtown area, and and seeing one of our goals, and I think we will find this through the Gail report, am I pronouncing that right? I always, Gail, I always pronounce wrong. Um, activation of the street level is a goal. We want to see more people um eating, drinking, entertaining things that, uh, you know, uh, on at at the sidewalk level. So I guess my question for this, because I know I asked this during our discussions previously, was if we were to waive the fees as it related to the outdoor dining activities, what is the hit to the city? I mean, how much were we bringing in?
Angela Fuze, Assistant Director for Development Services, we currently have three permits that use the sidewalks, so we charge them an annual fee to dine in the outdoors. With our, the RTC improvements and just COVID changing the way businesses operate, we anticipate there's probably another maybe twenty projects that are using sidewalks. So from that perspective, um, we currently rake in less than two thousand dollars a year for those encroachment permits.
For all of them together?
The three that we currently have on file.
Okay, so even if you, you know, ten times that, okay.
It's it's a very nominal number.
Okay, to me, the benefits far outweigh the the revenue received from it, um, and I think quite frankly, we should be promoting it. In addition to waiving it, and maybe that's the angle is to promote that it doesn't cost more to have this activity. We want to see more people on foot and bike and scooter um enjoying our beautiful city. Um, so, okay, I I thought the number was actually gonna be a little higher than that, so to me, it's a no-brainer to waive these, these. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, good job, Angela. Hold on one second. Um, Madam Clerk, can I ask you if we have public comment on this item?
You did not ask, but we do not.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for asking.
Check in with you. All right, thank you so much. The other thing I would say is like, I think it's really important now more than ever that we really help our small businesses. I mean, the pandemic changed small businesses forever and the footprint of how we operate. And I would say this, if they're doing well, we're doing well. So we have to look at them also like business partners. I do think Vice Mayor is correct in the sense like I hear all the time, small businesses like, oh, the city, you know, is not helping us. Well, there's a lot of ways in which we can help them. It's just I think we don't do a very good job of getting the word out there of what the things that we do have, right? There's a lot of that um that I hear, because I'm like, wow, because we did a lot of rollout during uh the pandemic for, you know, so much assistance, right? A lot of money. But I think also we, for some reason, it doesn't seem like we we get the message out to the small businesses well enough. I don't know, you know, which way or, you know, kind of things how they're for instance, let me just tell you, someone literally dropped off at at my business um like a bill. And I thought to myself, like, literally dropping off? Like, that to me is like crazy. You know, how many people do they do that with? Right? And I thought, well, that's great customer service, but at the same time, that doesn't seem like efficient. And then it happened again, and they kept coming back. So I just, and um it just, it, you know, and I'm not in my business as the owner, right? But there are other people in there, so I didn't know anything about it. So, you know, I just think there's some better ways we can do communication. And I know that's on sort of like Rebecca's side, but maybe we can figure out ways in which we can like do, you know, more business-friendly initiatives. What's your thought, Will?
Uh, Lance Ferrato, for the record, absolutely. I I think that there's a a combination of social media and email and website activity that we can promote this kind of idea. Um, and and all ideas, we try to, we try to be, um, we try, we try to uh offer this information up with our compliance officers when they're out in the field and our staff in the city, so when people come to the desk, they can get that information, but um, I agree, we could do a good job of putting it out there, um, you know, for everybody to see, yeah.
Good. And then, you know, in Miami, and I think you, we we were on a Zoom call together looking at, I think it's like OpenTable or Open something. But it was really interesting. You can literally open a business right from your cell phone in Miami. Like, and I just, I love the ease of it, and there's a lot of great tools that businesses, because it's a lot of times people will go and rent a a business or like a location and not realize they don't even have the zoning to be in that location and how much money they've wasted and time spent. So like, I really think we kind of need, and now that you're here, new fresh set of eyes, um, I think it's gonna be really, really helpful, but kind of overhaul, and it looks like you're doing that, which I'm really grateful. But from DJ trivia to these smaller businesses, they are the um largest job creators in the country, small business. So anything we can do to help them uh be successful and look at them as partners, because if they're doing that well, we're doing well. So I really appreciate you announced, because I know you're doing a great job and you're just jumping in, um, you know, from years of doing things the way we used to do it, so I'm I'm glad you're there.
Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Breckus.
I mean, you know, I think conceptually, the use of our right-of-ways is something that we have to assign a cost to, because it's something that we invest tremendously in, and it's whether or not you're someone putting fiber or utilities under our, you know, uh, streets. You know, Tom Wa running lines, they give us money. Um, and then we also need to make sure that the streets are working for all users. So I do believe that with someone wants to use the sidewalk, which is a pedestrian environment, we really need to be sure that that area is inspected, and I think we have good standards in the code. Because we need to make sure, we have a lot of obstructions in our sidewalks, and we need to make sure that someone's not edging out and obstructing a, you know, a person uh bearing disability, bearing abilities, you know, or even someone, you know, pushing a stroller who's who's um not needing that accommodation. So I do think we should make sure that we're annually, you know, inspecting these or permitting them and having something on record that shows, you know, this is the line, you gotta stay clear here. You can't put it here because there's a light pole here and that only gives twenty-four inches clearance. You're not talking about getting rid of that review and standards, are you?
No, ma'am. I I I believe that the standard code practices and and review of those things would stay just in place. This is purely a financial
Oh, okay.
implication at this point.
So let's take that. So we're gonna do a review, and we're gonna do some sort of service of inspection, which we do on, you know, everyone else, right? You know, you change out windows at your house, you, someone wanted a pod um to put in our driveway in our street, you know, we just assigned a a cost to that. So I do think we should keep a cost that is within the in analysis, we do the fee schedule, but I have no problem putting another program in as we think about our second tranche of COVID-related aid money to buy down these particular um charges, because I do think that the world calls for in managing the pandemic, you know, more options for outdoor eating and dining, you know, I think some, you know, in lieu of other measures, we know we don't have an indoor mask requirement now, but so I I don't support, I support it, but I think we should assign the COVID-related money to that. Um, so there, we're putting a connection to this, why we're treating this group of people differently than all these other people who pay fees for other city services inspection and using our right-of-way. So that's, that's where I would say, and it doesn't sound like it's a big value, so if it's ten thousand dollars for this next F Y, and we can take it out of COVID money, that would be my comfort place.
All right, Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll, I have quite a lot to chat about, so I might take two times. But let me start by saying, Mr. Ferrato, what a joy it is to work with you. You and your team are always innovating, don't seem to stop, have a lot of energy, and in a community environment where we know, as our mayor said, our businesses are really uh the backbone, the circulatory system, the whole body of it, we need to be doing that. So you're doing an amazing job. Thank you for your work for the city. The second is, I think that we had, um, this was an idea that the mayor really uh has uh spoken to before, and I'll just put some plug for, which is some kind of a small business council or a roundtable. Some opportunity for business folks to gather with us on a routine basis to tell us what is or is not working among what we do. Um, and so I'll put a plug in for that. Uh, third, I would say we need to expand the biggest little business partnership. So Mr. Chacon is really the architect behind this great program. It's uh been well-received in the community. Uh, I did put some dollars to it through the ARPA allocations, but in this next round, I think we have the opportunity to commit more resources to it, which could potentially um be more targeted at um folks who make a little more than the threshold we've set today. It could also be um really taught, uh, thought of in some ways as, you know, business incubator. It's almost um allows for business ideas to get off the ground. So it's something I think that this council would be well-served to consider allocating funds to. Uh, next, I would say outdoor dining is an easy no-brainer. That certainly should be done. We can also fix and clean up the issue with DJ trivia and small microphone level events. I think that could be part of this um happening. Um, I think um the the next thing I'll speak to is packaged alcohol. Packaged alcohol was one of the items that we um allowed and have now, I guess, disallowed. I think that this does a disservice to the businesses who have invested in the infrastructure to make packaged alcohol, so bottling or labeling, those kind of things. Um, this is another area where I think we could just re uh restore that opportunity. I've had, we had uh business leaders reach out about that. I think in our inbox is um a comment that was made by uh local business owners about that today. I also think that we um, you know, might figure out the ways in which the downtown Reno partnership has really contributed to the vibrancy of businesses. And so in my, in that regard, I know Vice Mayor Jordan, um you know, this is a program that she has uh supported at every step of the way, is really doing good things. Uh, I don't think there's anyone that knows that particular partnership better than she does, so I think that could be an area where we could look at. And then I'll also add that our communications team has been doing a very fabulous job at supporting small businesses. Councilmember Delgado has been launching, I think, last week, a communication platform to highlight small businesses. Um, and really, we should commit the finances to make sure that that is a successful program. And then the last thing I'll mention is that cannabis licensure and the process behind it, you know, we've had some discussions at this dais about uh hours of operation, all those things, and I think we're getting closer on all those things. But again, I spoke really fast, and I I didn't mean for it to be sounding like I was at a debate. But all of those things are things that are top of mind for me as we look at how do we help our small business community navigate a post-pandemic world and a world in which inflation and supply chains, uh, labor shortages, all these things are are really tamping down on our small businesses and impairing their ability to succeed. We ought to be a good partner to them as they have been good partners with us.
All right, thank you so much. Any other comments? Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Reese's um comment about packaged liquor nudged my thinking on that, and you mentioned packaged liquor. Um, are you looking for, because you're looking for direction on packaged liquor. Um, is that correct?
Well, specifically, we're looking for direction on outdoor business activity and how, what we can do with fees with those. As far as the outdoor um As far as the outdoor, um uh as far as packaged alcohol goes right now, it's in code that you must have a packaged alcohol license to sell that.
Yes.
Um during the the, one of the exemptions during the the state of emergency was that if you held an on-premise license, you also get you were received the ability to sell packaged alcohol, such as to-go alcohol or anything like that. Um so that was that was at that point. Um if if we're we're open for direction in in any angle at this point.
I guess um, you know, if it's not, because you're really talking about outdoor stuff today. Um, you know, I would not be opposed to having a further conversation about packaged liquor, but I really want to understand how that syncs up with this new um, you know, alcohol service ordinance that was adopted not that long ago, right? When was that adopted?
Uh that was early this year, January.
And when does it go into effect?
It's in effect.
Oh, it is in effect, yeah. Now, I didn't support that. Um I thought that it would hurt some of the urban population that walks to some of these downtown convenience stores. But if I'm hearing right, you know, a desire to liberalize some of the packaged liquor, it seems to me that it's at cross purpose to the ordinance we just put on. So we should probably have a discussion, y- you know, specific to that. Um but um if we're not prepared to give any direction on that now, that's fine. Um but uh, yeah, so, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. Um I prepared to make a motion on on this item, but I do agree that further discussion on some of the other items that were discussed, that maybe we come back and um maybe.
Great news.
Yes.
We have a date. The August 17th Planning Commission agenda, we are moving forward with a text amendment for three very specific items. One is live entertainment. The second is packaged alcohol, some changes. And the third has to do with some of our cannabis zoning requirements.
Fantastic. So so I guess my question on when you're coming back and discussing those items, um maybe we could get some information on what the process is for pop-up storefront opportunities? Let me give an example. We often talk about the city of Reno and in particular, some of the downtown areas where there are large swaths of blocks of inactivity. Or there's lots of closed-down buildings. If we were wanting to allow for local businesses to have pop-up shops on the sidewalk to draw people to the downtown core, is that something that's prohibited? Is it allowed? Is there exorbitant fees involved? What would that look like? I it to understand that and how it doesn't, how this does or does not relate to a non, for a business that isn't adjacent to, meaning we understand the sidewalk stuff you're talking about right now is for the business that's adjacent to it and the sidewalk use in front of it. I'm saying if a Dorinda's Chocolate wanted to host a pop-up shop in front of a vacant block in downtown, what does that look like? Is it hard to do? What's the fees? How can we promote that sort of activity? Um so anyway, that's another thing to put on your list.
Okay.
To talk about. All right, um Madam Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion on the item before today unless Councilmember Reese would like to do it as the at-large member.
No, I I don't, I'm not going to take that opportunity, but I do have one more comment. And I apologize, I know it's in my second comment period, if you don't mind. Um uh Ms. Foose, if I could, um I guess what I would like to know is the contours of this agenda item um seem pretty narrow, which is awesome. I, of course, was shotgunning for the moon, which is also not a great thing for me to do. But I was trying to share some thoughts with my colleagues. As I understood it, you know, this agenda item was about the elements of reignite Reno that we think we could still use or expand upon. And so for my part, um if if we're going to do it very narrowly and just talk about the outdoor dining, it's a no-brainer. And it sounds like you are bridging the gap between my wildly divergent issues by bringing those to the Planning Commission first and then we'll see them later. Is that a fair way to characterize it?
That is correct. And that is part of the text amendment that this council initiated. We had that list of 250-plus items that we need to clean up in the code. So those three items that I just mentioned were part of that list. And we're, we are constantly running into problems from a business perspective. We want to be able to do better. And so we're fast-tracking those items and getting those three items to Planning Commission first.
Okay, so for my part today, then, your advice to me is just say, slow your roll. Councilmember Reese, you're excited about all these things, but what we need to focus is on this. Can I just make a plug, though, for expanding the biggest little business partnership? I do believe that uh and it's a a a good investment of funds, but it's very underfunded. At the end of the day, I think we can make a commitment with the ARPA allocations that would satisfy the reignite Reno um concepts that would really be driven by a desire to see us help those businesses um in a way that would be meaningful to them outside of the three things that you've identified that are coming back to us, right? So for my part, uh I um would just say, I love the proposed uh recommendation. And certainly, uh Vice Mayor will make a motion, which I will be supportive of. But just that we would make sure that as we move forward in staff direction, know that um I want to make sure we're spending our resources to support our business community. And that's an important part of that for me.
Absolutely. Thanks for that.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Dur.
Yeah, thank you. Um I just wanted to um register my support for this item. I also believe we can't do enough for our small businesses. I love outdoor dining. Given an option, I always dine outdoors, uh even when it gets kind of cold. So I love the fact that you guys have thought of how to do this and are going to come back with the the right kind of um uh revisions to make this possible with, uh it sounds like our waiver of fees. So thank you for your work and I'm looking forward to supporting it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna send it back to Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. And Angela, um let me know if I have the right motion on this. Um move to approve staff recommendation to continue with the waiver of fees through the fiscal year 2023 associated with outdoor dining and encroachment permits.
All right, I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor? Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Breckus.
You know, I support, I said my thoughts, I'd like to see a discount from COVID money. But there were some topics brought up about, you know, Planning Commission initiation of some code changes as part of this reignite. I heard consumption lounges. I had heard changes to the packaged liquor ordinance and I heard something else.
So consumption lounges is a completely separate topic that has not been um moved forward. What we're talking about when we talked about the code cleanup, we found some sections in our code related to dispensaries and cannabis and locations.
Okay.
That we need to clean up.
Okay, and so that's part of that cleanup.
Correct.
Okay, because um, you know, I I think the consumption lounges are separate apart from anything from the code. They're separate and apart from COVID. And the initiation of that grand policy concept should start at this table.
Absolutely, that's correct.
Verify that, thanks. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, sending it back to you, Madam Clerk. Item, I believe we're going to item C1.
We are going back to item C1.
Public comment on item C1.
Madam Mayor, we do have public comment on item C1 from Tracy Wilson. And while we're waiting on her, I will just note for the record that we received written correspondence from two individuals, one in opposition and one concerned. Those were also um distributed to the Reno City Council and are available on our public website.
Hello again. Um again, I am Tracy Wilson with American Wild Horse Campaign and Wild Horse Connection. Um it has been a whirlwind. Last 24 hours and my head is still spinning, so I'm going to try to get through my comments and they may have changed. So forgive me. Um when we heard about the Canyons project, Canyon's Edge was not on the table for discuss discussion. A major concern with the canyons was the fact that the land is a major movement corridor for horses in this area to get to and from their current water source. During many trips to the site, we watched horses traverse back and forth. When the project was approved, it meant the horses would have to move to the base of a steep grade of the mountain to pass through to get water when built. Um now Canyon's Edge is pro is proposed to be built on that base, thereby blocking the path of the horses once the houses go in. Um we have been working on solutions to this. Um a big concern with waters is that the horses make their way several miles around that mountain to their current water source. They may choose to stay to the south of this area. That puts them in harm's way at the aggregate pit, also where there are openings in the fence line and puts more horses on our roads, which we all know we don't want to have happen. Um this is the foothill, you know, this pushes them into the foothills, Geiger grade. It's it's a terrible area that we don't need more horses getting on the roads. Um the only good answer here is an alternative water source that draws the horses up the hill to the northeast away from the encroaching development. Um water has always been our number one conversa uh uh number one consideration in this conversation from the very beginning. Um there's a very recent conversation that we may have a path forward on water. It still needs to be accomplished. Um as a request for a last resort, I also ask that a path get graded along the mountain behind the proposed home site fence line so that in the meantime, these horses can get to and from their water source in a safe manner without tumbling down the hillside or creating rock falls down the hillside, et cetera. Um it's not, it's not an easy answer. That path is a one-way, I mean, it's one path. It's you're gonna have horses coming one way, horses coming the other. Hopefully, it's gonna be wide enough that they're gonna pass without issue. Um it needs to be non-motorized. As of um, I'm sorry. Diversionary feeding is another way that we try to keep horses off the water. That gets approved by the Nevada Department of Agriculture. Um it is, it is now required to be a half a mile from structures and roadways. That's fine, but in this area, we do not have access on the Jeep trails to get a loaded truck with hay a half a mile. Um however, with this project, the developer is going to be grading a existing dirt Jeep trail for access to the higher parcels and has agreed to allow us permission to diversionary feed off that at that half-mile distance. Um I just want to remind everybody in all of this, because this has been really hard on all of us. This isn't a horse problem. This, as with all most wildlife issues, it's a human-created problem and I hope that we can all work together to mitigate it. Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor, with that, we have no additional public comment.
Okay, thank you so much. So at this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing. But for the record, and I just want to clarify with um with Carl Hall, City Attorney, can I open all three items, C1, I think, what is it? C1A, C1B, and C1C?
Yes, please do.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so going back, uh let the record reflect that we are now opening the public hearing. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given, any correspondence received?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just to clear, um we're opening items C1, C2, and C3.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um proper notice was given and the only correspondence was received, which I already stated, were the two comments, one in opposition and one in concern. And those have been distributed to the Reno City Council. We only had the one public commenter, so we are now closing public comment.
Okay, thank you so much. So at this time, I'm going to ask council members, do you have any disclosures? Anyone need to make a disclosure? Seeing that there are none, uh I'm gonna send it over to Brooklyn. The floor is yours, take it away.
Madam Mayor, before we do that, can we have um Mr. Carl Hall read the bill introduction for item C3?
Okay, perfect. I'm gonna send it right back to our city attorney. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance introduction, bill number 7214, ordinance to amend, title 18, chapter 18.02 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled zoning rezoning, unincorporated transition 40 acres UT 40 to the Canyons Planned Unit Development, PUD Canyons. The plus or minus 80.22 acres site is located approximately 1,400 feet east of the eastern terminus of Mine Shaft Drive, together with other matters which pertain to or are necessarily connected therewith.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, Brooklyn, go ahead.
Good afternoon, City Council, Madam Mayor, Director of Policy and Strategy. My name is Brooke Oswald. I'm Associate Planner with Development Services. The case before you today is LDC 2100034 Canyon's Edge. This project is approximately 80 acres in size and the request is for a master plan amendment and a zoning map amendment. That zoning map amendment is specific. It's actually amending an existing handbook. That's the Canyons Planned Unit Development Handbook. Uh these two properties uh were annexed in 2019. Um it did go to Planning Commission. Uh there was a a great discussion on the merits of this and why it went through. That was recommended for approval. There were five present uh that night. They all recommended approval. Uh the key issues that we look at from staff is that compatibility with the surrounding zoning and districts and uses. And we also look with that compatibility of the master plan. To come in just a little closer on the project site to so you have a location, Demani Ranch High School is just to the left there. This is just to the east of Demani Ranch High School. Now, this is the Canyons PUD here. That's at 80 acres directly east to our subject properties. Um that is an approved, was approved by this body. That that PUD has several additional um considerations that went into that uh from uh Virginia Range fencing, architectural standards, wildlife provisions. A number of other things were included within that. Now, what we are asking to do is not a new development, but to amend the existing PUD to add an additional 80 acres and eight home sites. To go over our our um master plan on this and that, what that master plan uh amendment will look like. Uh that is the map to the left. As you can see, the yellow represents our single-family neighborhood. That single-family neighborhood goes down through that Palisades development and down through that area and is is consistent. Uh our UT is that unincorporated transition. That's the light green there. That is, when we annex, we bring in a county translation of that and that comes into that uh unincorporated transition, being the transition that we would anticipate that that zoning would change in the future. What they are proposing to do is to bring that single-family neighborhood into uh into the 80 or acres, as you can see. And there's a very jagged line along there. And that's specific because that jagged line is, goes along the contours. And so what they have found is developable land along, that sits right along that existing roadway and network of the PUD that they are able to put in eight more homes. Additionally, what we're going to see is 64 acres of um open space coming into this with that. And if we go to the right, now we have a corresponding zoning of that is our unincorporated 40 or that's unincorporated one dwelling unit allowed per 40 acres. So they would be allowed two dwelling units on this uh on these properties now. They are, they are um asking to join the PUD and ask for eight dwelling units along this. So it will all become one PUD. That's the Canyons PUD. And so this will be consistent, design standards, requirements and everything will be consistent among these two developments. Uh jumping back on the reimagine Reno, just while we're looking at this, we do, it is a master plan. So that does require that it goes to Truckee Meadows Regional Planning um Planning Commission. And uh they will be looking at the the conformance of this conform, if that master plan being performed conforms to the overall master plan. Additionally, what they'll be looking at at the governing board, because this will be a map change, is that they have a tier system and they have it, it it's uh one through three. Our tiers now that the current tier is a three, which is usually highly restricted um uh geography or topography that restricts that. This area is very steep, uh very cliffs and steep hillsides. What they are proposing, and then to actually um move forward with development, they would need to go to that tier two. They are proposing the exact same as the master plan. So that's small sliver of yellow will come into that tier two, which is, would be that developable land. That tier three will stay over that PG and OS, which gives a further comfort that that land will be protected in the future. Let's quickly go through. So this is the PUD itself. Uh this is a very, a conceptual map. And what we're looking at here are each village centers. So there'll be houses prescribed within each one of these villages, just so we can, we're looking at that whole PUD as a whole now. Now, this is to the west of the site, so coming up from Palisades is where we'd be coming there, just so that everyone can orient. Now, as we go through, the green is very noticeable. It's approximately 75% of the site will be in that parks, greenways and open space. Um then each other one is a village and those village have certain requirements and standards for the housings that are allowed in each one. So the current PUD that we have approved allows for 73 homes. This, the proposal, which is the blue, we can see that blue outline, will allow for eight more homes. So we would be increasing our density there up to 80, 81 homes. But we're also increasing our overall project size to 160 acres. So this is coming out to about one home per two acres, which is a very low density. We've been able to cluster. We've been able to use creative techniques that allow us to move into this area and do that. And that's supported by our master plan and a number of other things as we start to move, as we get more constrained, that we start to lessen that density. Um additionally, we have enhanced Virginia Range fencing standards. This would be the amendment that you saw. Oh, sorry, before I go there. So this is what they are proposing. So now you can see uh how this will lay over and what they are proposing here. So if we bring this over here, just to blow it up a little bit, so this is just taking that. that small map, moving it over, what we can see is we have 10 parcels. Those dotted line in between, those are all, uh, approximately 10-acre parcels on this. We do have a proposed, um, water tank with TUMWA on that. That has been, the grading has been approved through the PUD, and that additional entitlement happened to get that approved. TUMWA has, uh, approved the, uh, design and how that will be built. And if we look at our homes, they sit right along that far edge of this, so we have eight homes kinda tucked up with private driveways that are going off that, um, roadwork neck, network that's proposed within the Canyons, the approved Canyons PUD. This is that enhanced Virginia Range fencing and gate standards. Once again, just to orient, this is the east side where we're coming up from Palisades. Those fences will connect to the current Palisade fence. The fence in between will be removed, and then that fence will go up, and it surrounds, basically follows that topography just like we, we showed before. There are some unique things in this, as you can see, the, the, uh, green triangles, red and blue. We have worked with the, the horse advocates and the, and developer to, um, we're continuing to learn, and I think Tracy mentioned that earlier, and what we've seen is a number of vandalism, other issues that we have. So, we are, we have, um, proposed a new fencing scheme and gate scheme within this, and, uh, I will move forward to kinda show you what that is. So, we're, we're proposing a pedestrian gate, which will not be a gate that opens or ever could be left open. It's a swing gate or a kiss gate, so that a pedestrian can move through there and never have to do it. On our, on our main cattle guard gates, uh, that have all the restrictions that, that come through Reno Municipal Code, we have a heavy-duty gate in that thing. What we're seeing is those gates being destroyed and the horses getting through. So, they'll be doing additional gate, and then that bottom gate is showing, uh, with the horse advocates, if a horse does get out, that gives them the ability to move those horses back out on the range. Steph, in, in our, uh, assessment of this and our analysis, we were able to make all the findings that look, that's looking at the compatibility, how this complies with our Reno Municipal Code, our master plan, NRS being Nevada Revised Statutes, uh, we are looking at those provision of those public services and utilities, and that it's not detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. With that, I'll leave you with two motions. You do have two separate cases. You have the zoning map amendment, uh, which is that, that PUD amendment to the handbook, and then, uh, your second is that master plan amendment. I'm available for questions as needed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Kenny did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the body for questions. I'm gonna start with Councilwoman Breckus.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Oswald, thank you for the presentation. So, among the findings we need to make is that it's a rational phasing plan. This is rather unusual, because we had one PUD, we're doubling in size. What's the phasing plan for the project? Has that language changed in the PUD?
Uh, what we'd anticipate, you know, as, as with developers, see those, those permits coming in, um, what we'd anticipate is, um, that, well, the phasing plan is, it's meant to be built in one, so we'll get that backbone infrastructure in, and then we'll have these lots. What we'd anticipate, these would probably be custom lots, so one or two may sell, they may all sell, so the development of those will be over the time and period of that. But the infrastructure backbone provision of all those things will be supplied at the time of the, uh, main development.
You know, I think the PUD really wants you to tie someone to a specific timeline for phasing, so that everyone else can plan around your infrastructure, your improvements, and so on, and the fact that, you know, they're coming in and doubling something that already was supposed to go on a phase, you know, is a, is a challenging one for me, and, and I don't hear that we are holding them to any phasing. Um, let me ask you again, another policy is that it meets the master plan goals, and one of the master plan goals was that we were gonna continuously monitor the land supply, and now we're adding eight to, you know, 72. Do we have an analysis of how many similar lots like this we have? I mean, 10-acre lots. I recall a slide right here from the master plan appendix that said, "We really do have a surplus of these large lots." So, are we monitoring the land supply and saying we need more 10-acre lots? Have we done any analysis on that?
Um, I, I could do more research on that. I don't have the, uh, analysis on that presently in front of me. Also, additionally, our, our, our regional is keeping tabs and looking at that for us. Um, what we'd anticipate in this, because it is, it is eight lots, it's not a, an exceptional amount of lots. Additionally, those 10 acres, what they really provide is that buffer to that, that land that becomes less developable as we move to the east.
Yeah, I mean, for me, you know, we, the master plan, we all view, you know, what are the important components to make that finding, and for me, it's really understanding the land supply, 'cause you're only gonna absorb so many lands, and, um, and I'm not hearing that we've been doing that. The last question really is about the site. Was this the one with the big alluvial fan and cut, cutting through the, you know, kind of the, um, the hillside there where the roadway was gonna be, you know, built up on either side, and there was a big alluvial fan that the access road came through?
Well, I, I don't know if I would call it an alluvial fan. How we, how it is defined, it is a major drainage way. As we did that assessment, we, uh, all our Reno Municipal Code and everything was applied to that, that drainage way. Uh, they applied for the impacts of that, and those were mitigated.
Okay, well, I'm out of time, and when we open these up, three at a time, we really limit the ability to ask all these questions.
Councilwoman Reese, go right ahead. Okay. Councilwoman Dorr, three minutes.
Thank you. Um, over a year ago, the mayor, council, uh, made it known that we would not entertain further applications in the Virginia Range until a horse management plan was put in place, and today, we do not have a horse management plan. However, we have made progress on that arena. Um, I've worked for the last year with our city staff, uh, to not only create the plan, but take immediate action to implement the things that we could. And further into the overall plan, we held two public workshops, uh, to look at, uh, potential fencing. We put in, um, new signage, actual new signage that was approved by, um, the, all the parties involved. We did a speed study on the roads to look at, should we limit speeds? We did some public awareness. We have a PSA, Public Awareness Campaign, starting in August, and we're, um, on our path with our fin, fencing plan. On this particular project, um, the biggest concern is that this is the last chink in this entire foothill area. If we block passage here, the horses can no longer go along the front of the range. They would have to go behind the range. Um, about a year ago, this application was submitted, and it was revised. Um, I met with staff then, um, and, and the applicants. Um, they, uh, met with the NAB. NAB expressed their concerns. They met with me. I met with, uh, Jennifer Baker, John Krompottic, Jim Dolan at various times, including right up to 10 minutes ago. Um, they met with the Planning Commission. They agreed to a deed restriction orally at that meeting. That was not memorialized in our council staff report, but I understand they, uh, you know, they made, they already agreed to it at the Planning Commission, so I, I assume it's going to be written into the, uh, document. I talked to our attorneys. My biggest concern about that was that there would be fence lines, uh, Brooke just showed them. Um, they've agreed to not have the fences as part of the deed restriction, so I'm comfortable there. Um, in the last few days, the applicants have come forward to address a few of the remaining issues. Um, what I had hoped today, um, and that we're gonna hear from the applicant in a minute, um, that they would, um, put those things into writing, and I actually helped them by writing them up, everything that they had said they wanted to do, everything from funding to water, to a passage behind the ho, eight houses, uh, access to diversionary feeding. When we met, um, they seemed like they would rather, um, have those read into the record as commitments and not appended to the, uh, PUD as written commitments, so I just wanted to give you an update on where we are. Um, I, I still have problems with this site and where it is. Everybody knows that, it's no secret. Um, I don't think eight additional houses would in itself be a harm, but I'm extremely concerned about the impact, um, on the horses. The applicant has, um, offered some things that they're working on, and they're willing to read those into the record, so at any time, Madam Mayor, um, you know, if you wanna hear from them, um, that would be good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions, Council? No? Okay. Um, I'm gonna ask some questions, so, and, or, you know, a little bit of background. It's been, what, is it been about a year now?
Yeah.
That I said, "We need to come back with a horse plan." So, you knew, we all knew.
I've been working on it.
That we were gonna be doing a horse plan.
Of course.
The other thing is, I think Tracy makes a really good point. Um, you know, have you gotten, um, what is it? Uh, Daybreak in the Room, Sunny Hills in the Room? I mean, everyone needs to sit down together.
Right.
That's way overdue.
Right.
So, I'm a little actually irritated that that hasn't happened, and I don't know why, but, um, that should've happened a long time ago. And so, my other urgency over on the horse side is that because we don't have that fencing, it is, we are still putting people at risk by them, the horses being able to come down and have access.
Right.
And that's really dangerous, and that honestly, there's a big sense of urgency because of that, and it needs to be, and that's one of the reasons, like, now is the time that we've got to be working on these issues.
Great.
And we gotta move forward to do that. If we don't, then these things don't get done. So, that's why I'm really glad that we're here. I appreciate all your hard work. I know you've worked really hard. I would just ask that we really try to get this done before we come up to council and wait till the very last minute, but one of the questions that I really would, um, love, because I did meet with, um, Mr. Krompottic, and, uh, Jennifer Baker, and Mr. Dolan, um, and I asked you tons and tons of questions. They were all related to, um, horse mitigation, and everything I asked you, um, and, and quite frankly, I, I have to tell you, 'cause I know, we've all worked with a lot of developers, you have been, um, so amenable and so easy to work with, and, and, um, you know, love the horses. I mean, you're born and raised Navadan, right? Like, we wanna preserve this heritage. It's important. I was impressed about your, your level of commitment to doing this. Um, it was really nice and a breath of fresh air, so I really appreciate that. Uh, with that being said, I don't know, maybe, Mr. Krompottic, you wanna come up and talk about the things that you have done, put in place? I mean, it, honestly, I thought, um, I, I, 'cause I don't know if the council knows, like, everything that you've put in place to help us get there.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, John Krompottic, excuse me, here on behalf of the applicant. Um, there's been a lot going on, as you all know, the last couple of days, and I, Jim, did you wanna take it from here, or did you want me to go through these commitments that you've made? Bottom line was, you know, we've come a long ways. We all, I think, agreed that it's not necessary to put some of these in the PUD, because he's made some very strong commitments to the horse advocacy groups, to the community, and, uh, he's willing to put that in the record, and wanted to put it in the record best coming from him. Um, I, I so appreciate your comments, Madam Mayor, because this family's been a delight to work with. Uh, you know, Tom Dolan was here earlier. You guys know Jack, Jim, and his brother Danny. These, these guys are wonderful, and, and I, I expressed a bit of frustration in our meeting and our negotiating, uh, today, but I've seen his character and action and his commitment for a year and a half. We made an application on January, in January of, a year and a half ago, and he wrote the check for $75,000, put it in the escrow account for revegetation, for range revitalization. You know, that's not talk. He did it, and we've created the new fencing plan, um, that wraps in the Canyons PUD with this Canyon's Edge expansion, right? We created a new gate standard, the three different gate standards, vehicle, cattle crossing, and pedestrian gate, I believe to the satisfaction of Tracy, who's been instrumental. We met on the sixth floor a couple of months ago, just to get this all done, because everybody has a piece of the action here. Those are the big ones. Uh, and, uh, I, I mean, you know, it's, as far as the PUD goes, I think it's all there, and then the rest is gonna be further commitment that Mr. Dolan has made to, uh, this, he wants to make to the city council.
I just wanted everyone to understand.
Yes.
All of those commitments that you've made.
Thank you. So, that's all I have, yeah.
And my anxiety too, is by not having that fencing.
Yeah.
That we're putting more and more people at risk, and I think that that is just a ticking time bomb. We've seen it, and because of the delay.
Yeah.
It's caused a lot of problems.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's one of those things, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when.
Right. Yeah, I heard today.
Someone's going to lose their life, and so, we have to do it. We've got to do it and take it seriously, so.
Yes.
I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. Um, I too want to, um, give special kudos to the developer and the applicant, and you, Mr. Krompottic, and to Councilwoman Dorr, um, and, and to Tracy and the horse advocates. I know these issues, I mean, I, I think back to when these issues really started coming before us a few years back, and we had roomful of polarized folks that it, I never believed the, the bridge between the two was ever gonna get to any point of, um, consensus or even collaboration, and it sounds to me like you might be one of the only in this area of development that has worked, uh, over an extended period of time to get to a point of collaboration and, and, um, working together, and it sounded, while there might be still some things that need to be ironed out.
Yeah.
It sounds like, uh, you're in at least the same room having a conversation to iron those things out, and I can't say that about maybe some of the other developers in this area.
Appreciate that, yeah.
So, I just wanna give kudos to the, the Dolan family and their commitments, um, to our region and their lifetime, um, to this project, and to, uh, everybody that loves Reno, loves the horses, and wants to see the best for everybody, so just thanks for sticking with it.
Thank you. If I may too, um, I'm sitting with Jennifer Baker, and she's.
Yes, I'm sorry, she's behind you, I can't see.
She, she, she's been instrumental in all of the, this commitment with, uh, her knowledge and, and her, uh, involvement with advocacy groups as well.
Yeah, kudos to everybody. It's been very civil and productive.
Yes, no, thank you.
Might not be across the goal line, but you're darn close.
Yeah, thank you very much, yeah.
Okay.
All right, Madam Mayor? Oh, sorry.
Hold on.
Thank you, Madam.
Councilwoman Reese, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Mr. Krompottic, don't get away that easily. Mr. Krompottic.
Come on back.
Sorry. It's not like getting called to the principal's office. It wasn't like, wasn't like that.
He's always talking about me.
I know, I have been tough on you, Mr. Krompottic, but I think for good measure. Um, the Dolans have made, uh, tremendous commitment to this region, so their, um, experience, skill, and, uh, uh, what they do and word and deed is beyond, I think, measure, so I, I, no issues there. Um, ultimately, I am someone who is supportive of the conceptual project and the plans. The eight, uh, houses, uh, and the configuration seem to me to be a fair, um, use of the space, and, and I think there's a, a part of me that is very happy about the commitments to public green and open space. Uh, that all sounds and sits very well with me. I suppose the concern I have, though, about, um, this reluctance to put any of the commitments into writing or into the PUD, I'm trying to understand why. What is the downside to having them in writing? 'Cause fundamentally, I believe that you've made some huge progress, you are working towards the goals, but, um, I don't entirely understand what is the reluctance to having them memorialized in a written format, because no one's gonna go back and watch this video.
Right.
And if the property changes hands, or it goes to a different member of the family or a trust, or however it happens, I, I just am a little reluctant, so help me understand that.
Thank you. So, for example, there was one, uh, Councilwoman Dorr wrote an expanded narrative on this issue of deed restriction of the open space and what can be done. We volunteered, um, and, and you, and, uh, Brooke did a fine job of explaining the little yellow band of yellow, which is gonna be the single-family where the lots are, um, assigned, and then the rest is open space. And the point was, in this process, which used to be all large lot residential in the master plan and zoning, has now come down to 80% open space, and, and what Mr. Dolan and I, and he gave me the authority to go negotiate this with staff, was that what greater commitment than to put that in a PUD handbook and in the master plan, so that there's no perpetuation of development further up the hill? That was the idea, because there was people say, "Well, we don't really understand topo, but maybe you can find another way to create a few more lots." We said we're going to put it in writing. In addition, uh at the Planning Commission, we offered a deed, Mr. Dolan authorized uh deed restriction of that as well. So it's like, it's very well established in the PUD as written and presented by uh Mr. Oswald. That's one example.
Yeah, I I guess maybe perhaps with the remainder of my time, I'll just turn to the city attorney's office and ask sort of the same question. There are a number of things that have ended up in my inbox that are related to it appears to me, things that have been agreed upon, maybe they have been uh verbally committed to, they've been talked about. I I just am trying to walk the fine line between those and not trying to um hamper the developers' opportunity and the opportunity to develop these particular lots. So I'm trying to figure out, where where does legal fall?
Yeah, um for the record, John Shipman, City Attorney's Office. I think some of the other items that fall into that category are things that, from a timing standpoint, are temporary conditions. For instance, the um Location of water. Yeah, the pathway for the horse. Now, that's going to be ultimately, you know, this, it's not going to be used for that into perpetuity, once there's an additional road put in. So a lot of it, I think, was just timing of these things. Um and 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 then the wording, um you know, it'd almost be done before it was, you know, when you memorialize it, it's already been done. So this is going to be happening kind of parallel um as they, as it goes through the final process. So they were things that certainly we want to put on the record that are going to be done. And there's evidence from Mr. Krampotic and Mr. Dolan that they have been doing these things, like the escrow account. Like, all of these things are there and they're going forward. Um but uh it just seemed to burden the PUD and kind of complicate things and things that would become almost like artifacts after the fact.
Madam Mayor. Yeah. Councilwoman Breckus, go ahead.
Mr. Oswald, um is this in the foothill neighborhood?
Yes, this would be under our structure plan.
Yes, under the structure plan. You know, I expressed my concerns that, you know, are we monitoring the land supply to understand that we need eight more ten acre lots, you know, because when I look at the early work and I think other factors, we we don't need more ten acre lots, we need other types of lots. But um the structure plan talks about cluster development. Are these eight lots clustered? Because it looks like each one gets a straight property line um in a ten acre, you know, parcel? When they come through to subdivision.
So um so we need to look at the overall PUD. We do have these eight homes, but the overall PUD does use that clustering as we move up the hill. The technique that we're using here is that we're putting one home on ten acres. And so it it has that natural dispersion in that way uh without having that, you know, additional input of twenty homes along that same sixteen acres.
Well, we already have a PUD that clusters. This one, the addition, does not cluster.
Uh technically, technically correct. It it uses ten acre private lots.
And and then the next issue in the structure plan talks about matching and edging up into unincorporated, you know, lot sizes. What are the lot sizes to the east that are unincorporated?
So the majority of this land that we see going, that's all privately held. And we we do see some odd angles and some different things like that. But for the most part, what we see are very similar forty acre lots that were established as it moves out. Now, if we do, if 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 development does that move that way or 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 the annexation, you know, a number of things would have to happen. What we would see is is probably a transition of those lots.
Yeah. So I challenged with the land supply, with the structure plan framework, not bringing in a cluster addition to the PUD, um and the hazard risk in particular. We're up in a real danger zone. There's a lot of findings in here about safety from natural disaster and hazards, both in the findings and in the structure plan. And it's a lot easier to have two property owners on forty acres maintain defensible space than ten property owners with really irregular lots maintain defensible space all the way up. I think this is a very irresponsible land use approach.
No doubt.
All right. Thank you so much. Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilwoman Doer.
Madam Mayor, um.
Let me just find out. Madam Clerk, are we on round two? We are on round two. Okay, go ahead.
Um Madam Mayor, I I could be prepared to make a motion for approval, but there are many things that Mr. um Dolan has made commitments to do that need to get read into the record. The attorneys agree, our senior staff agrees, Mr. Dolan agrees. And so until that happens, I really can't move forward. So he's agreed to make, you know, do the things that you've alluded to, but he has to say them. So.
Well, we're going to give him an opportunity.
Okay, well, I'll I'll reserve the rest of my time, then. I just wanted to make sure he had an opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much. Okay, so at this time, I'm actually going to ask Mr. Krampotic or uh Ms. Baker if there's anything you'd like to put on the record and um.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Dolan at this point in his list of commitments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Or I mean, anything else regarding anything else?
I think we're good, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Because usually we give time for you to present and.
Oh, you mean like rebuttal time? Oh, yeah. You know what? I'm glad you mentioned that, because I had a PowerPoint. I I mean, I, you know, Brooke's a very knowledgeable guy and mine was almost identical to his. And it's like, I don't I don't need to be heard on a redundant PowerPoint. So, thank you.
All right. And Ms. Baker, you want you want to come up?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Council, thank you for letting me have the opportunity to address you really quickly as a community person in the Demony Ranch area, who is also a very strong advocate for the wild horses and our safety of our community. Um Councilman Reese, you asked the question, why today, instead of waiting another month to put it into the PUDs? Um that was part of my concern, was we don't have another month to wait to start moving forward on this particular project because of the fencing and because of our massive loss of life over the last two years that we've been um as a community very concerned about. This fencing is part, a a small part, but a part of the solution to keeping the horses up in that mountainside and off of the roadways, which is where I live. And we unfortunately have to pick up bodies and and help with car crashes and children that are traumatized for life because they have to see this. It the the fastest thing we can do is is move this forward, fast track it. And I'm not a big fan of fast track. Um I'm really big on take our time and do this right and be very thoughtful. So I have actually had these conversations with home, um builders and developers and landowners up in that area for eight years. We have got to do something to block the horses up onto the mountain and get them to stop coming down to the fresh green grass and the the water and the other opportunities that they have to get carrots and apples and colic, which is the worst death you can cause a horse. So my concern comes from the safety side. And and to answer your question very directly, honestly, I was the one that said, I really, I I want all of this, just like Naomi does. I want to hold everybody's feet to the fire. I want everybody to do this right. I know we're dealing with a Dolan family, so my trust level is much higher than normal. And I have also been closely related to these people and and nagging them now for many years. I've asked for some dream come true moments for these horses, and these guys are actually stepping up and doing it without being forced to do it. So I would say that I'm standing in a place of trust and and holding them to their integrity. As I say, we really need their solutions to come into place as fast as we can make it happen. We need their fencing. We need their water. We need their their money that they have dedicated to the wildlife plans and the issues sooner than later. And I stand with Tracy and say, it's already too late for the water issue that she's bringing up. It's too late. We're going to have a large loss of life already. Because we don't have a water supply up there at this moment. We are going into the heat of the summer and we run out of natural water sources, which there are multiple water sources up on the mountainside for the horses to get to, but it dries out once it gets hot. So where we are today is we're already behind, not from your standpoint, but in trying to save lives. We're behind and we really do need some solutions. The Dolans have stepped up to say, we can help. Um they own eight lots. Out of I don't know how many hundreds of lots that will be up there. We've brought in thousands of units and apartments. They're the only ones saying, hey, maybe we can help. And not just maybe we can, they put some money towards it and put some effort towards it. So I stand as a community member, saying this is a good idea. And I will also say, um because it's been asked before in in the past, yes, they have paid me, but I am the one who's managing what they do with that money. So that way it's clear on record.
Can you, sorry, can you state your name and association for the record?
My apologies, Jennifer Baker. My association is the Demony Ranch Homeowners. Thanks.
Um I want, one thing I was just trying to think, I think it's my COVID brain, honestly. Like, it really, um, okay. I guess I'm going to send it to you.
I'm asking Mr. Dolan to come up. He's made a lot of commitments and he wants to put those on the record. So uh before I say anything.
I I I got you. It's okay. Breathe. Take a deep breath. Okay.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, uh city council members, my name's Jim Dolan. I'm the manager of the Virginia Forties LLCs uh with this project. Majority, super majority owned by the Dolan family, uh the ones here and some others, family members. And I first want to thank you for this opportunity to present to you our project. I want to in particular thank uh Councilwoman Doer um for having professional and reasonable conversations to ultimately reach the common goals and objectives that they want. I also want to thank Tracy Wilson for all the conversations over the past year and a half of things that need to get done, how they need to get done. Uh we've been up on the hill several times, looking at where the best placement fences would be, where the gates should be and what they should, what they should be. We did a um, uh Councilman, Councilmember Reese asked uh uh some of the things that we are doing. Uh one that wasn't mentioned is on the the long term is revegetation of hillsides. So we went through an effort of uh consultants, um Tracy's organization, um and Comstock Seed to go through and figure out what the right mix on the range could be, given the 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 arid, dry nature of it and the type of grasses up there. So we already have purchased uh three tons of seed um to distribute by helicopter. And we already have the helicopter line to do it. You can only do it when it snows. They get a, they get a snowfall and you seed it, it soaks into the ground and hopefully takes the seed. That's going to be on five hundred acres of our own property east of this project. Hopefully, uh the revegetation after the fires will be a guideline for what others can do uh uh in this area and this regional plan. Um I hope that in the future, some of the other developers can step up and work with the organizations like Tracy and Naomi for these types of things that need to be done. And you guys in the council have expressed many times, uh 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 Mayor Hillary is actually uh a year ago, we listened to her, what needed to get done. We believe we solved those those issues. And the last couple of days, we've been talking about, okay, what have we done? And we've gone through with Councilwoman Doer with this. And what do we need to do? And so we decided that uh to move this forward more quickly, that we will commit to other things and put on the record. So I'd like to read those in the record, if I may. Um first and foremost, uh water is the most important thing. And uh I've committed to Tracy in the organization to actually work with her organizations, other organizations to pursue sources of water, um so we could ultimately move the horses up higher. We've also committed to um accommodating temporary uh um uh water um tanks with troughs that are already in the uh the range, all over the range, that you can truck water to, to put in there to have sources. And so we're working through that. The other thing that we've uh done is we've actually working on, I think, the road that goes to the east, west to east, to regrade that road to allow for trucks to get up that road to carry diversionary feeding and ultimately water when we get the access to water. So I've committed to Tracy to continue to work with her on the water sources, so we can fill them up with trucks and ultimately get the horses uh farther up the hill. So that being said, the two things that we, we had six things, I think, Devin, you're referring to that. There's two things that we that we decided uh as a group with Naomi that that should be on the record. Uh the first one being uh deed restriction. If you look at that open space area, like John said, we're agreeing to deed restrict that. And that includes um uh fencing, there'll be no fencing in that restricted area, so there'll be no obstacles. And um and no for, no further homes on that area. So that's the deed restriction that we agree to do on the record. Secondly, um the road that we're talking about, as council has said, this is, it should be a temporary road. Uh if you remember that slide that showed the fencing, that along that fence line, the the curvy fence line, we're going to build, that's where we're going to build the um uh the horse trail as an accommodation. If we don't figure that out beforehand and if we put up fencing, we will have that horse trail so so that the horses can get to the existing water source if we do not get the new water source in place enough. So that way the horses can still get water, similar path, just a, just a new, smaller path. And when we get the other water sources together, we expect that to still be a trail, but not for the use of the horses getting to the trails. So those are the two uh commitments I want to put on the record.
Yeah. And then there were a few other things, if I may, Madam Mayor, um that you mentioned. Um you you mentioned it in passing, but you you said that you would write a letter to the um wild horse. You brought up the water. You would write a letter making that commitment to work with them on the water sources.
Yes.
Um you said that um you would, and it may require additional permits, uh grade this road to provide uh access for diversionary feeding uphill. And it may require submitting additional permits for additional cut and fill.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
And then um you also um have said that you've already put into escrow your seventy-five thousand. You said you've spent fifty, there's another twenty-five, that you've made an oral commitment to continue. There's no requirement, but you've made a commitment to um add that to further the cause, the horse management cause.
Yes.
Um you have acknowledged that we're working on a Virginia range outdoor corridor and that uh your streets, your sidewalks are public and your trails through the PUD, the canyons PUD are public. And I have let you know um informationally that it, the corridor may very well come through your property. And people may be using that, just as you already expected, but I wanted to make sure you knew it very well and clearly.
Yes, I'm aware.
And um I think that you have hit everything that we discussed. And um I think that what we're hoping here, rather than put anything except the deed restriction into the permit, was that you're going to write these things down, whether it's a commitment with Wild Horse Connection or a commitment with the city to work with us on these things, that you're going to memorialize that in writing, just not in this permit.
Yes, including uh we will also enter into agreements with the horse organizations for uh darting, um diversionary feeding, et cetera, like we have in the past.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Madam Mayor. So with those understandings, um and to be memorialized and further commitments and and writing in other places, not in this permit other than the deed restriction, I could make the findings on this particular project. Um I want to add a um a a side note. Um you said you're disappointed that we haven't been able to meet. I agree. The, one of the challenges with all of the developers out here is that they have not, they have struggled to meet their permit conditions. And it's, um for example, one built a gate, but then said they're concerned about installing it. So the gate is not installed. Um I cannot force that. Um for five years, I have asked the city staff to support me in a regional plan here in this very specific area. They haven't had the bandwidth. Um they informed me that they're having bandwidth now. It looks like they're going to add a person, replace Kelly Mullen and work on these kind of things. But I have to do a huge shout out, if I may, to Jackie Bryant, because she had, she, and she has hired a consultant, have been by our side. They have worked with us with outreach, with the fencing, with the speed study, with the public awareness and with the fencing plan. And it includes NDOT, the county. These are all, this is not just a developer issue. We've tried to do the city side of this, that that we can control. So I have to give her the highest praise for that. She has been by our side. She's made her own time available for that. So while we're not where we want to be, we are a further, much further down the path than we were a year ago. So uh and this should help us if if assuming and that the Dolan family and Jim in particular falls through on these commitments, which I am assuming, um we're going to be in a better place.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. All right. I have a motion from Councilwoman Doer. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I think.
I have a question on the motion.
If I can jump in here real quick, just as far as taking the motions. So we're going to take individual motions.
Oh, okay.
First motion on C1.
Okay.
I believe your motion is to uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission subject to master plan conformance review by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission and tier change by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Governing Board on C1.
And I want to make sure that, does that re, include the deed restriction that was written into the record?
It includes the deed restriction, yes.
And uh and I checked with John Shipman, the no fencing on the on the property lines. He said that was fine.
May I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Um so we're amending the master plan. We're adopting an ordinance introduction. And this go-between, the testimony that Mr. Dolan just gave, the so-called commitments that Ms. Doer just got, where where are those going to get written into the the clerk's letter? I heard they're not going into the PUD. We know we don't condition zoning um ordinances. We don't condition resolutions. So where's this going to get written? And would it be binding when this entitlement, because we know entitlements run with the land and not the owner?
That was Mr. Reese's question. And Mr. Dolan has orally indicated that he plans to do the things that he said he was going to do. And the horse advocates believe him because he has put his money where his mouth is and performed up to date. And so uh there's mutual trust between Mr. Dolan, the horse advocates, uh that he is going to perform according to his.
What if he's going to sell the land and the entitlement to Pulte Toole Brothers or D.R. Horton? Does it bind with them? To the sale of the property?
No.
It does not. So would you characterize it as a quote handshake deal?
I would characterize it as an oral obligation to perform certain things that he said he was going to do.
That's fine. I just, it's, I don't see a lot of, you know, oral commitments. Um you know, when you do land use entitlements, usually it's. land use entitlements, usually it's memorialized, but this seems like an oral handshake deal.
Well, I know that timing was an issue in this. I know Mr. Dolan wanted to get something done, I know that the horse advocates wanted to get something done, and unfortunately, the parties weren't able to meet earlier. And so this is somewhat of a last minute negotiation, and I think the parties are comfortable that Mr. Dolan is going to perform according to his representations.
Thank you for explaining that and your interpretation of that.
Okay, we have a motion on the table for item C1. So Councilwoman Duer has given me a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. No more discussion, or, go ahead, Councilman Reese, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure, and perhaps Mr. Dolan, if you could join us again at the dais, and thank you for the commitments that you've made orally today. I think those are enforceable, obviously, and I think that, I just want to be clear, have you agreed to construct, operate, and maintain wildlife watering troughs or a group of troughs?
No, that's gonna be part of the $25,000 left over in that fund for Tracy and Naomi to, and us to decide what the use is. Whatever the highest and best use is, it could be for a trough. I initially gave them a budget of things that it could be used for, and so it could be used for the troughs, and it could be used for something else.
Okay, and let me ask a second question unrelated to the watering source, but are you, have you agreed to a level path along the eastern and portion of the northern and southern perimeter sufficient for the passage of wildlife along the entire length of the PUD property?
Can you rephrase that one more time, please?
Well, my understanding is, and because I want to be as clear as we can, and when you make oral promises, being clear is like saying mud is clear, right? So I want to make sure I understand, have you agreed to construct a level path along the eastern and potentially the northern and southern perimeter sufficient for the passage of wildlife along the PUD property?
Could we pull up the one map that shows the horse, the horse plan, please? Keep going. Keep going. There we go. What we're committing to is the north-south fence line. We will put a horse path on the east side of that. You have to determine how close, because Tracy and I have to work out the distance. We don't want horses to come off of that, or wildlife, from where the trail starts, going west to east, the dotted line, starting there, going all the way down to the bottom, following that same fence line.
The red line?
Yes.
And ultimately, the purpose of this is to allow wildlife safe passage, it's not for motorized vehicles.
Yeah, that's true. And mostly, Councilperson Reese's, that the water source currently is on the southwest side of this map, and that'll allow access to the current water source until we find an alternative water source.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
I have to ask a question, because you said an answer that was very confusing. You said you were not committing, I thought you just said you were sending a letter committing to work with the wild horse folks on providing water. That was my most basic understanding.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, I'm sorry for the misunderstanding.
But when he asked you that question, you just said no, that was separate.
It's a different question.
Is it a different issue?
No, I don't think so. I'm trying to figure out, how do the wildlife get water?
Oh, currently, they get water on that southwest side of the project.
And how will they get it in the new world of this project?
In the interim, until we get a new water source, they will follow that fence line with a path that we're gonna build to continue to go to the same water source. And I will work with, I've committed to work with Tracy and the group to find a water source, whether it be from the water tank with Tomar or whatever, and some other options. My commitment was to, was to work with them to achieve that.
So maybe I'm a little confused.
There's also other water sources, am I right? That's what I was told.
Yes, all this is still talking about the short term with the goal of moving the horses further east away from people for public safety. And this first step is hopefully, if it works, we can get a water source to put in trucks to go to the top of that hill, see the line up there to the east. Everywhere to the east of that is Dolan property, we will up there have some type of water tank or, and diversionary feeding to accomplish that.
That would be a permanent. That's what you're saying.
Well, it can go up there, but I think what the regional plan is trying to find the whole corridor and everything else that the horses be at, and that's, we don't know what that is yet, but we will work with you guys on all of that.
Yeah. Would, Madam Mayor, would you mind if I just ask Ms. Wilson? I want to make sure to Mr. Reese's point that we have clarity and that there's not confusion. And is that what your, could you come up for one moment? Because I don't, I'm not, you've been the one who has spent the most time talking to Mr. Dolan about the water.
So this just brought up another question for me, in, at the end of the $25,000, who's funding water?
Well, we have to figure that out. We didn't know how much water is gonna be.
I mean, because we had, at one point, talked about the water, if Tom was gonna allow the meter, that that could be wrapped into the HOA. So now I'm confused, like at the end of $25,000, if you're paying a truck to bring it, that's gonna get expensive really fast, more expensive than a meter. So now I'm a little confused on the funding of the water.
My hope would be that other developers would step up and do similar things. We, I mean, we're eight lots, and we're trying to do more than our share. I haven't gone through to see how long it would be and how expensive it would be. First thing is just to find the source of the water and then deal with it.
Okay, I guess my concern now at this point then is, is the, I mean, right, I don't think eight houses should fund it, but if you've got an HOA with 79 houses in it, that's gonna be a pretty minimal piece of their HOA piece.
I mean, I came here prepared to approve this with the understanding that you're gonna provide this temporary water as we laid out. So I guess I'm not sure if you're backing away from that, or you're saying it a different way.
What I committed to with Tracy is actually, we will work with them to find a water source. That's the commitment. And we don't know where that's gonna be yet, that's our agreement.
The other, the other thing is, I think, to your point, you have to pull in those other developers from Sunny Hills. You have the contacts of who their representatives are, Naomi, you can just get on the phone, they will meet with you. I know one of them for sure, I don't know about the, what's the Daybreak, but you really need to get in the room with them.
I agree.
And spend, I don't care, like lock yourself in a room for three days.
For the record, Sunny Hills has refused all communication with us, so.
Okay, well, we'll see what we can do.
My, my team has been reaching out to them on a regular basis with zero return.
Okay. Well, we will, we'll reach out to them as well, but we have to have everyone kind of putting this together.
Absolutely, absolutely.
To your point. So anyway, with that being said, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Madam Mayor, I'm not gonna support.
Okay.
I, you know, I expressed my concern is from a land supply, but the irregularity nature of approvals like this is just not the way a jurisdiction of 300,000 does it. It's very, very concerning. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries unanimously. I just want to say too, this has been ongoing a long time. I was pretty clear of what I was asking for a long time ago.
Exactly.
And the fact that it, we're, at this point, we can't wait anymore, because it's gotten to the point where people are really nervous about that fencing, and it's dangerous. So if we keep kicking this can, and then someone gets killed.
Well, Madam Mayor, it will, it will not be, for lack of trying, and perhaps on our next agenda, we could have a presentation.
But I, I guess I get frustrated when I hear comments like this, because this has been happening for a long time. I was really clear over a year and a half ago, and here we are. So like, and if that means you and I need to get in the room with all the developers, and then we'll pull in our executive team, and I want to thank Jackie so much, because she has a love for horses. Thank God, I love that you love all of our animals, because you feel the way I do, because not a lot of people feel that way. They really don't. So that's what I love about Jackie, but all of us getting in the room, and because, you know, I don't want it to be unclear when the next development comes in. And, you know, that just isn't gonna help anyone. And I said this a long time ago, so.
This fencing is not on any current development that we're working on, this is development that came in years ago, years before we even had a concern. We're trying to retrofit existing world. And that takes money. I've asked our staff to write to the Department of Ag, who just got a $500,000 appropriation from a federal bill, includes money for fencing, and they're exploring the process to do that right now. So we can't build fences without money, and luckily, we have everyone at the table that needs to build those fences.
That's exactly right.
But not the future development fences.
All right, speaking of which, may I please have a motion?
On item two.
C2, please.
So C2 would be a motion to approve the resolution.
Councilwoman Duer.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Okay.
Regarding the master plan.
Okay.
A motion on the master plan change.
Okay, thank you so much. I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Okay.
And then C3 would be to refer.
All right.
The ordinance to a second reading.
All right, thank you, Carl Hall, I'm sending it right back to you, Councilwoman Duer.
All right, motion to refer.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilwoman Duer, a second from Vice Mayor Jarden. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Hall. Appreciate the help. Okay, and now, we are on item G1, I'm gonna send it back to you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're moving on to item G1, which is a potential appointment for the Access Advisory Committee. And Madam Mayor, this is your board and your appointment.
It is, and I'm super excited about this one, but I don't, hold on, I gotta find my, we're dealing with different agendas here, because we're on a new system, so, hold on, let me see. Where are we? And I need my bigger readers. Where are we? Okay, so Madam Clerk, at this time, I would like to appoint Dora Martinez. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Dora, super excited to have you serve. It's gonna be fantastic. Okay.
All right, item G2, which is an appointment to the Ward 1 Neighborhood Advisory Board.
Okay, I'm gonna send it over to Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, I'd like to appoint Bill Shrimp. I hope I pronounced that right.
Bill Shrimp?
Yep.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, moving on to item G3, appointment to the CDBG Subcommittee as an alternate from the city council members.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to, if Councilwoman Weber is open to fulfilling that alternate position on CDBG Board.
Okay, yes, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Okay, if you would like, we'll go ahead and open the redevelopment agency board.
Yes, let's go there.
Okay, I will go ahead and call to order the redevelopment agency board for July 27th. Item L1 is roll call.
Okay.
Councilmember Breckus?
Here.
Duer?
Here.
Delgado?
Here.
Jarden?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Sheevy?
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the redevelopment agency board. We're on item L2, which is public comment. We have none registered. So we'll move on to item L3, approval of the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Approval of the minutes?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item L5, comments from the board.
Any comments?
Yeah, tomorrow, thanks. Tomorrow, the Civil Service Commission meets, and there's an issue going on at the Civil Service Commission that I would.
Councilmember, do you want to do this during normal council instead of redevelopment agency board?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay. So we're gonna close item L5 for redevelopment agency board comments. Item L6, there are no general closing public comments, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you, made a motion. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mickey, by the way, for keeping us on track. You're doing amazing. Appreciate it.
Okay, so we are now moving back to item H1, which is mayor and council comments.
Yeah.